All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our lovely, beautiful Planning Commission meeting for the city of Malibu on Tuesday, September 5th, 2023. May I have a roll call?
You can't. Sorry, I didn't see you pop in. Commissioner Hill?
Hi, Rebecca.
Hi. And Commissioner Jennings?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Here.
Chair Peake?
I am here in the living flesh.
You have a quorum.
Um, may I ask you what your name is?
Wade Major.
Wade? No, your daughter. Sorry. What is it?
Hmm.
Hero, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Legions? Whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you kindly. Sorry for putting you on the spot. Did he did amazingly well. Um, do we have a approval of the agenda? And may I suggest that maybe we move Bush Drive before the school? So we're going to do five B before five A.
I will second that motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All righty. Good job. Um, thank you. Rebecca, can I have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on August 25th, 2023.
Thank you kindly. No ceremonial presentations, so we're going to go to our first public speaker of the evening, which is Norm Haney. Good evening, Norm.
And good evening to you, Chair, and the other Planning Commissioners. At the last City Council meeting, one of the hot topics was the wedding that was held on Broad Beach Road where the Gazini's daughter got married. I was brought into the efforts to obtain a special event permit for them about eight days before the actual event. It was consistent with Malibu's development standards but inconsistent with the LIP. The reasons that it occurred and why the permit was ultimately issued is complicated, but I think it's worthwhile. If any of you have questions, I'm available to answer them. And the wedding did go off in the middle of a major storm on Sunday, and much of the people didn't obviously show up. It was a huge event, and it was sad that the hurricane came down from Mexico. Thank you very much for your time.
Hey, Norm, I have one question.
Yes.
Was it a good party?
You know, I don't know. I wasn't invited.
All right, maybe next time.
I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead, John.
People misunderstand what people like Norm and other expeditors do, and they are hired to represent their client with the city, and they are advocates for doing it correctly. And so they, people hire an expert, and it has nothing to do with whether they're for or against the project. They're not pushing the project. They're just trying to get it through expeditiously and correctly. So I saw a lot of press or email stuff about Norm, and it has had nothing to do with Norm. It had to do with the process. So I just want to say that.
Thank you for acknowledging that. John, would you like to begin with our Commission comments?
We only have one speaker?
Uh, yes.
And we have none on the Zoom?
Do we have any on the Zoom?
No, there's no Zoom speakers.
Oh, okay. Got me off guard here. Okay. There's been a lot of comment recently about the retail ordinance, and I noticed in in our minutes that we're going to approve, we asked a year ago in July, June 22nd for a review of the retail ordinance with a planning commission, which I don't believe we've ever had. It's, I think it's apropos now to get that straight, since there apparently is a big battle coming, which I'm not involved in. So I'd like to at least get that somehow scheduled so the whole city understands what it's all about and the history, hopefully. Let's see here. Oh, and that is, oh, the other thing I want to ask for is we passed a new procedure for the Planning Commission, I believe, last meeting, maybe the meeting before that. But I'd like to get the Commissioners to all to have the official final version of it, so we could all be coming from the same page if we could get that published and sent to us. Thank you.
John, just for clarification, I think Rebecca would like to know what exactly that is so she can provide it to us. Were you referring to the?
The procedures under the Roberts Rule of Order, all that stuff.
You have a printed copy in the packet that was delivered to you with this Planning Commission packet for this evening. You have a printed copy.
Yeah, I just noticed it this afternoon. It was at the very back end. It's stapled. I didn't have time to review it, but I figured that's, yeah, that was my reaction.
No, that's ERB recommendations. The last thing I got is nothing. So.
We'll make sure that you get one.
Thank you.
Um, Richard, question for you just in regards to John's comment. Is there some time in the next few meetings when we could get a little update on the formula retail ordinance? Maybe just allow no longer than 20 minutes on that?
Yes, I apologize for the blank stare. I'm trying to think of what staff could do that for you. But yes, we could look at scheduling something before, try to get it something to you before the end of October. That's only three meetings at this point.
Perfect. Thank you. Craig?
Okay, yeah, I have several things. First off, I'll lead off with, well, I think the in-person meetings are generally better than the Zoom, but the Zoom is better at one thing, which is it allows us to see each other up here, which we, on the Zoom, you can see everybody's reaction. You can have a conversation here. It's really hard to sometimes even hear what's going on at the other end. So I'm looking at this dais and I'm figuring out a really easy fix that would make a huge difference, and I hope the City Council is watching this, and you guys can consider this. Basically, you have this straight dais runs along here, and at the very end, you have little wings that tip out towards the audience. Those wings are created by little wedge-shaped dividers between these modular units. If you shifted the wedge-shaped dividers so that they were around just the center modular unit, then you'd have basically two, two longer wings, and we'd be able to see across at each other this way because we'd be facing each other a little bit. So moving these dividers and doing it is no big deal. It could happen in a few hours. It's on wheels. The only hiccup in this is that at the center here, there's some electrics underneath the divider right now for the microphones and so forth. If we pulled this centerpiece back a bit to accommodate the wedge shape, those would be exposed, but you could build a very nice little soffit box around them. They'd now be out in front of the thing, nice hardwood thing, maybe it matches the dais. You put the city emblem on the front of it. I don't know. But that would be, that would be the one real material thing you'd have to do is just to build a box around the electrics there. So next, next thing, as long as we are having Zoom for council also, we should fix a few things about it. Zoom participants can't see who else is in the room now like you could before. You could look on the list and see who's, who's there, who's participating, so you don't know who else you're talking to. Let's get that back. Also, the clock should appear for speakers. It hasn't lately, and that's tough to, unless you tell people, keep track of your own three minutes. And also, somebody at the last council meeting wanted to show a slideshow and speak over it at the same time, and somehow that was not implementable, and it kind of ruined their presentation. So a few tweaks on the Zoom process. Next, this is, this will be a question for planning, but we have an item here, and we've had multiple ACDPs where the appeal period is reported to the Planning Commission in the middle of the appeal period. And it seems like there's a problem whereby if somebody, a neighbor or somebody wanted to appeal something, they might not be able to figure out there is even anything going until they're halfway through the appeal period running. I've been told that that's some kind of administrative thing, that if the Planning Commission then decided we wanted to pull the administrative thing and actually have a hearing on it, then the appeal period would become null and void. But it seems like it would be easier if potential appellants had the benefit of the whole period. And then on, this is a small thing, but on minutes, formula retail clearance, let's have the name of the business for the record. So, because that's the first thing that anybody would go looking for if they wanted to track something down, not just the store number in a mall or whatever, but the actual name of the business. And then finally, today, New York City goes to a short-term rental ordinance regime that allows only hosted short-term rentals, and they expect that the number in, I don't know if it's Manhattan or all of New York City, the number of short-term rentals is going to go down from 15,000, and so far, there are only about 250 registered under the new regime. If hosted can work for New York City, why not here for us with coastal? Malibu is probably the most visitor-serving city in California, if you just look at what we're doing in the daytime, if you don't count it as whether you're spending the night here or not. And so if we could have an update, if there's any update on what's going on with coastal and how we're expecting to resolve that, that would be good to hear. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Greg. Dennis?
Good evening. Well, what I've been talking about is our processes to, for the simple things to get a permit and to keep our citizens to keep coming in and get a permit. And been through a couple of things and talked with some people. We're, I, I know that we can get this done. We have good people that's in there. It's hectic, but that's something I think it's very important that our city just, they have to feel comfortable enough to come in and get that done. And I think it's really important. And other than that, we have a lot of work tonight, so I'll let that go. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Mr. Jennings?
No, we have a lot of work tonight.
Okay, I'm going to follow both of your leads on that and say that I hope that everybody had a great Labor Day weekend, and seemed like the chili cook-off went off and was a really successful thing, and their policies that they put in place seem to work better and lessen the crowd and the impact of those ruthless teenagers out there. So I hope everybody made it home safely and had a good time. We are now on, oh, Richard, do you have any comments for us? Sorry.
I'll keep it short, given the items we have this evening. But the quick one I can respond to, Commissioner Hill, is on short-term rentals. It's back to the ad hoc committee. The council ad hoc committee met with the Coastal Commission, I think it's probably at least a month or two at this point ago, to get feedback from the Coastal Commission on their concerns regarding our hosted ordinance. And so now we'll be meeting again with the ad hoc to see how the, basically, the direction on how to proceed.
Can you tell us who that committee is?
Thank you.
The ad hoc committee from the council is Mayor Silverstein and Councilmember Riggins.
All right. Thank you, Richard. Okay, we are now on item, we're now at the consent counter. Are we pulling anything from consent?
Yes, I'd like to call, pull 3B2.
3B2, but not 3B1?
No.
I have a couple of speakers on 3B1.
Well, then it's pulled.
Well, it doesn't have to be pulled.
If they want to speak, it's pulled.
Um, Don, do you want to speak?
We are only interested in answering questions.
Okay, and is?
Oh, I.
3B2, we're talking about, is minutes?
No, uh, yes, no, I do want to pull 3B1.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that that's clear. May I make a motion to approve item 3B2 when we're pulling item 3B1?
I'm pulling both.
Okay, never mind.
Okay, very quickly.
We'll start with 3B1.
3B1 is addressed at 28462 V S Arrow. When you pull that up, it is not the lot. It is, that is lot number 16, and the staff report is written about lot number 19. So the wrong lot was noticed, according to the city's GIS. So I don't know what that does to this resolution, but it's, it wasn't noticed properly.
Let's get a brief comment from staff on that and a real brief staff report. Renika.
Sure. Hi. So the incorrect address, are you referring to what comes up when you do a Google search for that address?
No, I went to GIS, typed in the address, and I got lot 16. And from the notice, lot 19 is the lot we're considering.
I'm sorry, where are you finding that information?
On the city GIS.
Let's see. Think I should have access to that here.
Yeah, it's right on the front page of the city's website. I may have the two numbers mixed up, but.
While, while she's looking at that, can I clarify something else?
Sure.
Okay. I have a couple of speaker slips for this item. I don't know if we're going to need them or not, but Cameo, Cameo, right here, and then is Farzane? Or is that for the same item? Okay, just, just making sure. Renika, whenever you're ready.
Yeah, I am having trouble finding GIS. May I just go to the city's?
It's right on the front page of the city, under City Council, in the left-hand column. Right, I think it's right above the, the, it's on.
So assuming that what John's saying is correct, what I'm going to ask is what would be the corrective procedure to make sure that the noticing went out properly if the noticing was referencing another lot and the noticing went out to the wrong place?
What I'm doing, excuse me, apologize. What I'm doing, Chair, is I'm trying to pull up the actual noticing, because it really doesn't matter what GIS, Google Maps. The question here is, did we not, or did we notify properties within 500 feet? So what's key is to look at the, the map with the noticing radius, because as long as we went 500 feet out from the correct parcel, we're good. So I'm trying to bring that up.
Wouldn't the staff report for the public be, have to be correct?
The staff report, actually, on the last page appears to be correct, and the fact that it shows the, my understanding at looking at this, the parcel identified with the white outline and the black star on the, on the, on the NOA.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what's mislabeled.
Commissioner Mazza, I was able to pull up, excuse me, GIS on this computer. You're right. When you enter the street address, it does put a marker on a different property, but the APN number is correct.
Well, yeah, but...
The APN number referenced in the noticing is correct, as is the radius, the noticing radius.
Now, my question is, if somebody looked at the staff report, they'd say, oh gee, that's a different lot.
I mean, I don't know what to, what to say to that, you know?
I mean, we're making a resolution.
In terms of, you're saying that if someone looked at the staff report and then went to GIS, because the city's GIS, you're saying?
Where they drove by or whatever, that's the address for that property, a different property.
And so once again, I will, I will echo the director's comments that the, that the address, as long as the, our notice went out from 500 feet from where that this, the proposal is going to take place, and it was adequately and accurately reflected in the correct APN and address, the fact that our GIS may have an error in it is not, does not vitiate.
Oh, I know. I'm just wondering, why would the GIS have a different APN number since they're sequential? And it appears that the one that's listed, the wrong one. So I'm just wondering, you know, you pass this, it gets put in their file, it's the wrong file. So I, I don't know whether you just bring it back for consent with the right notice or, or what you do. It's just something that can be a major problem someday down, you know, 10 years from now.
Patrick, assuming that we have the correct, the noticing went out to the correct addresses, and we've sort of got some clarification on that, but that seems to be true, are we comfortable, if this gets approved tonight, with making those proper changes to the documents and making sure that goes into the right file, or do we need to bring it back?
Well, correct. So I don't believe, as of right now, as I understand it, because what I am, and once again, I'm, I'm, I have the GIS up, I similarly have the Google Maps up, which I agree Director Malika is not, is not dispositive, and the, the address listed and the APN listed, to me, seems to line up with the, I'm, I'm referring to page five of the, of the staff report, which is on the, the lot, which is kind of the, one, two, three, you know, kind of has the point toward the end, which seems to line up. So...
Page five, it's all text.
I, I, page three of 13, excuse me, I'm all electronic. So it's, 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 it's that, that lot all the way to the left, and then looking up the, at the GIS, that APN seems to match the one that I'm staring at.
Are you sure? That's 16 instead of 19. Look at, look on the front page. It says this property is whatever the GIS is.
Apologies. So yes, so the APN, I'm, I'm going off of it as the one on the agenda. Is, are you saying that there's a different APN listed in the staff report?
No, the address and the APN.
Chair, if I may.
The APN is right on the front page.
The error is not with this application, nor the noticing materials. There is something with our GIS. If you type in this address to Bing Maps, it comes up in the right, right property, the one between the developed property and Canaan Dune Road. The noticing materials went 500 feet out from the property I just mentioned. So it is my opinion here that the issue lies in the mapping software. This is not the first time that's happened.
I understand that, but if you look at the parcels going up to that parcel, they're sequential, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19. And this one isn't. I don't, you know, it's not a big deal, except that five, 10 years from now, they go drill their well or whatever they're going to do. And somebody says, you're on the wrong lot, guy. Okay?
Okay.
Now, can we make a motion to correct the record?
I would not do that, because it was properly noticed, and that does appear to be the address. And I, and speaking from personal experience, if you put my home address into Google Maps, you're not going to end up at my house. You're going to end up down the street in the wrong cul-de-sac. So I would recommend that we stay the course here. The noticing materials identify this property. Our database, which is how the city does its addressing, identifies this particular property.
So you, you don't use GIS, you use something else? Okay.
I'll just add that I just checked it on Google, and, and like Richard said, for Bing, it does match up. So I think somebody would find it.
I'm comfortable with us going forward with this. Do you have any other, do we want to hear from the applicant or anybody else?
If they're, if they're cool, if they want to, you know, have a faulty record.
You want to make a motion to approve it?
I move we receive and file 3B1.
Okay. So we're good with that? Everybody consensus on that?
I thought there were two speakers.
I thought they are. I don't think that you guys wanted, did you want to speak? Okay, go ahead. Farzaneh, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, first of all, thank you very much for allowing me to speak here. I also think the general idea of informing neighboring properties about what is happening in their neighborhood is a great idea. I think, generally speaking, it allows people who might be impacted by a development to be notified, so gives them a chance to express their concerns or their preferences. I think it's also a great way of building respect and comfort in a community. So I wanted to thank you for doing that. And number two, I wanted also to thank Ms. Renika Brooks, because I wasn't quite clear about the project, partially because of maybe a bit of a mapping issues. So Renika was very generous with her time. She took the time to answer my questions and concerns. Number three, well, I apologize, I should have introduced myself first. My name is Farzaneh Bibian, and I'm an interested party, because my property is located fairly close to where Mr. Camiar is developing his property. And I also wanted to wish Mr. Camiar and his family good luck on their project. And doing that, I also wanted to make sure that as he's before, during, and after the development of the project, certain qualities of my property is also preserved. To mention some of those qualities, these are health qualities, access, the value of the property, the beauty, the safety, the property boundaries, comfort of access and living, and comfort of visiting for me and my family members as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Schmitz?
Well, as you said, Chair Peake, it's great to see the beautiful Planning Commission here tonight. I'll keep this very brief, and my client will not need to testify. Very briefly, the site, you've already heard the discussion in regards of the certified notification. I'd also put, put out there that the site was posted on this private street, and it was on the accurate location. And there's, there's no concern that the well will be drilled in the wrong place. It is located accurately with the survey. Be advised that this well is on a piece of property where there's a pending application for a home. There is a will-not-serv letter from Water District 29. Your staff believes it's prudent that a potable water source be proven out on the property, hence the Administrative Coastal Development Permit. As articulated in the staff report, it meets all the criteria for an Administrative Coastal Development Permit. I think it's appropriate that it's being reported to you. My client is in agreement with all the special conditions, and we're available for any questions that you may have. Yes, sir?
I believe, and I don't have time to read it right now. The staff report says this is not for residents. This is only for agricultural and other uses?
No, the staff report doesn't say that. It says it is for residential or agricultural purposes. Anything where it is legally permissible to have a well, which must be properly permitted, not only by the city with a coastal development permit, but by the, the county health department well program. I'd also point out that not only will the well have to be constructed consistent with all their standards, but if the well is not producing, then it will have to be properly abandoned, filled in, so it maintains the integrity of the groundwater.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. Are we in consensus?
Yeah, I move that we accept 3B2.
That's good.
I...
3B2, I could not find the other reference, so I'll just skip that.
That was 3B1. So we're all good with 3B1?
Yeah.
Okay.
3B2 is the minutes.
Yeah, and I can't find what's, what was wrong with 622. I don't have my notes on that. So I move we accept it.
Okay. So we're now on item 5B.
Wait, hang on. Yeah, so, so Chair, so for 3B1, that's just a receive and file, we're good. For 3B2, that action is actually approve the minutes, so we do need a motion in a second.
I move we approve the minutes of 22222, 62222, 51523, and 53123.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Now, we are going to go to 5B, which is Coastal Development Permit Woolsey Fire Number 22-004, variance number 22-007, an application to allow for a conversion of a 508-square-foot office gym space into an attached second unit and a new onsite wastewater treatment system, including a variance for development within the required ESHA buffer to allow for replacement onsite wastewater treatment system at 6244 Bush Drive.
Chair, if I may?
You may.
Before we hear a staff report, I notified staff, and they're aware, and that there are one or two items on here that the application is incomplete on, before we start hearing it. One being that the environmental health conformance review expired in April and has not been redone, as far as I've learned as of today. And also, the geotech review is for a project that has one less bedroom than what is proposed here. So it sounds to me like we just, before we go through the whole report and everything, that we maybe need to bring this back with those documents updated.
I believe there was a last-minute email from Mr. Schmitz's office, from Cindy Martin. I believe it, it tells us that that's not the case. Commissioner Hill?
Well, I didn't get an email last minute. I checked the email up to like 5:30, so...
Well, it's there.
Well, can you, can you explain it then? It's not in, it's not in our packet. All we have is an out-of-date documents.
We got, we got answers to questions from, from Akash, and the last question was about that exact item, and Cindy Martin answered that item.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Richard?
Craig, Craig, hold on. He, we're going to have them speak to it. The email was sent at 6 o'clock tonight. So if you didn't check it after 5:30, and you're not expected to, but that's the story with that. So no, no harm, no foul there.
I'd like to ask the city attorney, is that proper public notice?
So yes, questions can be answered via numerous forms, whether that be in an email before the meeting. Mr. Schmitz or the applicant or staff can read it into the record tonight as well. I do believe that Commissioner Hill does have a question. I'm sure that staff can address it and, and answer it without just referring to the email that, that he may or may not have received. But to answer your question directly, Vice Chair Mazza, yes, it is, it is fine to receive correspondence prior to the meeting.
Okay, I would request we read it into the record.
Okay. So we will get there, but I'm going to suggest that we start with the staff report, and then Akash? No, Tyler. Tyler, sorry. At the end of your regular presentation, if you can answer Craig's questions, that would be very helpful. And if we need to read any of that into the record...
I'm sorry, before we, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm looking at the email now, and what I see is, the answer is no, we do not have an updated review.
That is from a... That's from Akash and not from Cindy Martin.
Okay, I didn't get anything from Cindy Martin.
Well, if the staff doesn't...
Go ahead, go ahead with the report. I just, you know...
Well, if the staff doesn't have it, how can they review it and inform us?
There's an attachment to the email that says that in there. So we're going to go back to the regular staff report. Ready, Tyler?
Yeah. Thank you, Chair Peake, members of the Planning Commission, Tyler Eaton, here on behalf of Akash Shaw, the contract planner, case planner for this project. Next item tonight, as previously mentioned, is for a coastal development permit at 6244 Bush Drive. So this parcel is irregularly shaped. It's located on Bush Drive, as mentioned. It's in the rural residential two-acre zoning district, and is approximately half an acre in size. The parcel was previously developed with a single-family residence that was destroyed in the 2018 Woolsey Fire, and this site has since been redeveloped in 2022. The subject parcel is partially located within the appeal jurisdiction of the California Coastal So the scope of work for this CDP contains the following. It's a conversion of a 508-square-foot office gym space into a second unit. There's new landscaping proposed, as recommended by the Environmental Review Board, and there's an installation of a new onsite wastewater treatment system proposed. There is a discretionary request. A variance is being proposed for the encroachment into ESHA stream buffer to allow for the onsite wastewater treatment The applicant submitted a bioinventory that illustrated the city's mapped ESHA boundary, as shown in the pink outline there, and is compared to the actual ESHA site-specific boundary in the green hatch portion that you see there as well. The actual ESHA boundary was mapped to include the entire jurisdictional stream course, as well as the riparian habitat and oak trees. So as mentioned, due to the proximity of the OWTS to the stream, this project was required to be reviewed by the city's Environmental Review Board, the ERB for short. The ERB heard this item in February of 2023 and made the following recommendations that you see before you. As per the ERB recommendations, the applicant revised the scope of work to include native vegetation outside of the mapped ESHA but along the adjacent slope for purposes of slope stabilization, and they also added some native vegetation to the proposed dispersal field, which was also a recommendation of the ERB. Here we have a site plan that shows the location of the single-family residence, as well as the proposed treatment system. The blue line that you see there indicates the flow line of the creek. The red line indicates the 50-foot proposed setback of the dispersal field, and the green line represents the 100-foot ESHA stream buffer, as required by the LIP. The existing dispersal field is only 28 feet from the creek. The proposed dispersal field will be 50 feet from the creek, which is a 22-feet improvement from the existing dispersal field. The proposed septic tank will be located in the same location as the existing. There's no place on the property to place the septic system or to place the onsite wastewater treatment system on the site without encroaching into the 100-foot ESHA buffer. And so, as mentioned, the applicant is proposing a variance to encroaching into the 100-foot ESHA buffer. applicant is proposing a variance to encroach within the buffer. Uh, the variance, uh, is supportable. Um, it is, um, it's the least environmentally damaging alternative in that, as mentioned, it will be setback further than existing. Uh, it's also going to improve site conditions to the, uh, from the existing OWTS. Um, it does not equate to a privilege to, um, this property, and it is, um, a use that is allowed by others within the vicinity. Along with the OWTS, there is a second unit, as mentioned. Uh, it's, it's just a conversion of existing space. Uh, it's five hundred and eight square feet of office and gym that is being, um, that is adding a kitchen, full bathroom, and a bedroom. No new structural development is proposed, uh, within the single family residence. And with that, the staff recommendation is to approve the project as conditioned. We are available for any questions. I think, uh, Chair Peake wanted us to touch on the, um, the, uh.
So on the issue of referrals, I'm assuming that what Commissioner Hill is pointing to is the OWS plot plan. Note number three on the plot plan reads, this review is valid for one year or until and/or the LCP and/or administrative policy changers, changes, rendering or render it uncomplying. There's some grammar issues there. Um, but essentially what that point is, is saying is that if the code changes, it's my understanding, that you have one year to obtain a permit per that design. So in the case of this particular project, there is no code changes, there's no changes to the Malibu plumbing code or LCP that I'm aware of that would have affected the validity of this. It has been reviewed by the building official, and at this point, they have no changes or no further comments until this item enters the plan check process. I believe there might have been a second question there.
Yeah, well, so the building official reviewed it how recently? Within the past year?
She and I spoke about this project this afternoon because of the questions that were coming up. So, within the last twelve hours.
Okay. And yeah, the, the other question had to do with the geotech review having been based on, appears to have been based on one less bedroom than, in other words, it was, it was for the, the, the post-Woolsey rebuild, not this additional?
With that, I can, I can confirm with the building official as well, but, um, my understanding is that the way these systems are designed on all these projects is that they do look at a preliminary report, and that's what, what happened here. And then the final reports will be once it's, uh, submitted to plan check. And in terms of the, the one less bedroom issue, there is not a structural issue with the house, if you will. Um, the house, the house is built. Uh, to my knowledge, all construction is completed. Uh, if there's an interior change on the house, i- it's, it's not going to affect the foundations. With regards to the wastewater system, uh, the, I think the critical path here, if you will, is that the system be designed for the load that's being approved this evening or requested to be approved this evening. And that preliminary review to the requirements of the LIP has taken place, so that this system, it's my understanding that based off of the building officials department, their review concluded that this system is adequately sized to handle the load that is being proposed this evening to the commission. And that again, that will get rechecked again, along with, um, other agencies like Public Works, the city geologist, the fire department, that will all take place again prior to building permit issuance.
Well, we'll, we'll probably have more questions about that, but we have the, the report coming up. But so you're saying it's not really material either that the geotech review is for forty-five drainage fixtures, and this is proposed for forty-eight? That's close enough? Is that your representation?
It's not that it's close enough. It's, uh, my representation on this matter is that according to our environmental health engineer, the proposed system has been sized adequately for the demand that will be placed on it.
Okay.
I have a question on that.
Okay. Before we go into all of our comments, we have a public speaker, and we need to do disclosures. So let's go ahead and start with disclosures, and we'll go.
Start with Jeff.
I spoke with Don Schmitz last week, basically went over the, the application and what was required in the staff report. Uh, other than that, no other ex parte communications. I drive by the property at least twice a day.
Thank you. Dennis?
I met with Mr. Schmidt's out on the site, went over it. Um, didn't learn anything new. Thank you.
John?
I've driven by there a bunch of times. No, nothing else.
Yeah, I've driven by and looked at it. You can see a fair bit of this from the street.
Okay. And I visited the site today and met with Don and learned nothing new other than getting a visual of it in person. So now we are going to go to our first public speaker, which is going to be Don Schmitz. And you have fifteen minutes, and would you like to reserve any time?
I feel naked without the clicker. Uh, yes, uh, based upon the, uh, emails which came in, I presume that we have some, uh, speakers in opposition. So I'm gonna try and wrap this up in eleven minutes. I'd also note that, uh, one of the speakers that has signed up is, uh, Mr. John Yarsowski, who is the onsite wastewater treatment system, uh, specialist engineer. He's here to answer questions, uh, which you may have some on, and, uh, will not be part of the formal presentation. So, oh, my clock's already running when I'm answering questions of the chair. Okay, Don Schmidt's on behalf of the applicant. We're running a tight ship tonight. Uh, this house was built in nineteen sixty. It's always a pleasure bringing forward a project that existed before I was born. You can see the health department approval from June of nineteen sixty, which was for a three-bedroom home with twenty-seven fixture counts. That's exactly what is out there right now. The home sadly burned down in the Woolsey Fire, one of many, as you are aware. A PVWF, that's Planning Verification Woolsey Fire, was approved for the reconstruction in kind plus ten percent, which is very common, has been done dozens and dozens of times within the city of Malibu. Uh, the PVWF was approved. There's the, uh, where the ten percent was added on the second story. Then there was an operating permit that was issued by the health department, showing that the existing septic system was still functioning as designed. And there was then an approval from the environmental health department for the, uh, pending APR for the additional square footage, which, as you can see here, says that the final floor plans must show no more than three bedrooms and twenty-seven drainage fixture units, which is exactly consistent with the house that was constructed in nineteen sixty and which is out there today. The APR before you today was for an additional seven hundred, uh, seven hundred and forty-five square foot addition to that single family home. It was approved with valid building permits and a certificate of occupancy was granted by the city of Malibu. Uh, de minimis waiver was granted for the septic system, which is before you today, but the, uh, planning staff, uh, concluded that because of the need for a variance, even though we're pulling the septic system back, uh, was going to need, uh, to come before you, which is why we are here tonight. So we, uh, submitted that application. It was deemed complete in March of twenty-twenty-two. Uh, and there you can see the only, uh, change really to the structure, which is the conversion of the existing gym to a secondary dwelling unit. There is no new square footage and no exterior work proposed from this. The wastewater system will be sited further where, away from the creek. It's more protective of the creek, and it does not adversely affect any ESHA. As staff reported, it went before the environmental review board, who found the project consistent, and they wanted us to change some of the landscaping over the, uh, the drip field area. The existing leach lines are only twenty-eight feet away from the creek. We're gonna be pulling everything back to fifty feet from the creek. The existing septic system is just a concrete box, uniform plumbing code, provides no disinfection whatsoever, which we are gonna replace with a state-of-the-art system. As confirmed by the septic consultant and your staff, there is no other feasible location on the property, and we meet all the health department criteria. The reduced setback to the creek will be mitigated by installing a redundant cleansing system. It, again, is a state-of-the-art system that we are bringing before you, uh, today. There is literally no place on this property to put a septic system of any sort that meets a full hundred-foot setback. The biology approval specifies that the proposed onsite wastewater treatment system is within the hundred-foot buffer. I moved too fast there, but it cannot be feasibly sited elsewhere. That tank is gonna be replaced essentially in the same location with a state-of-the-art treatment tank. The dispersal field is going to be completely replaced. Again, this is a, over a fifty-year-old, uh, septic system with a state-of-the-art system. What we've got now is just traditional leach lines, which takes the dirty effluent out of the concrete box and puts it into the ground twenty-eight feet from the creek. We're gonna replace that with a, with a microdosing dispersal field. We're not relying on evapotranspiration, but it is, it is very, very sensitive and, and much more consistent with the state-of-the-art criteria that the city has been espousing or promoting. The microseptic system is superior in every way. There will be ultraviolet disinfection of the effluent coming out of the tank. There will be chlorination and dechlorination of the, the treated effluent, and all this is before it is dispersed into the microdosing field. It utilizes both biological treatment and dual disinfection and the subsurface drip dispersal system. Uh, the further treatment, uh, will, uh, occur because that very clean water is then gonna be dispersed into the upper soil profile for further cleansing. So, this is a little redundant. I know you know this business. I know how much superior these systems are to the uniform plumbing code system, but in, by any measure whatsoever, replacing the system that we have out there is a big win for the environment. Uh, the proposed project replaces that existing system, uh, with, uh, not only treatment system, uh, but the tank itself that we are putting out there is, is watertight. It's sealed, the risers, everything else. The concrete box that we have out there right now, should there be some sort of floodwaters or anything, although this is outside of the mapped floodplain, Commissioner Hill, uh, I got your query in regards to that. So it is that much safer because of the integrity of the tank that we are installing. This system will not adversely affect ESHA in any way, shape, or form. Uh, there is a couple oak trees on the property, and of course, you have the creek ESHA, and as you can see in this exhibit, uh, what is being proposed is nowhere near any of that ESHA or those oak trees. The upgrade of the system will not adversely affect ESHA or any of the protected resources as established and affirmed in the biological inventory report, uh, dated September of twenty-twenty-two. The discharge will not impact the stream course. It will not impact the oak trees. Again, it's nothing but a win for the environment. Uh, from the, uh, ERB, the property supports three coastal live oak trees, was their findings, that meet the definition of a protected tree, but there are no direct impacts to those trees from what is before you tonight. And remember, there's just no structural changes to the house which is out there. There's no increase in fuel modification. It's gonna be the same envelope which currently exists on the site, which has already been permitted by the city. This is all the different departmental approvals. I would draw your attention to the second one. We were just sort of bragging. Okay, now we're just showing you that everybody looked at this. And it's covered up, but you can see the second one is the geotechnical approval from your geology department. They looked at this, uh, in great detail. Uh, there is no problem with the geology on the property. This wastewater system is actually, even though we're not relying on evapotranspiration, is gonna be putting less water into the ground and percolating down into the ground than the existing system that we have right now. And of course, it was reviewed by the biologist, by the Department of Public Works, and importantly, by the health department. So in conclusion, the conversion of the gym to the second unit on the second floor requires no additional square footage. The advanced onsite wastewater treatment system is located further from the creek than that which currently exists. And it just, it begs the question for a moment, commissioners, if for some whatever reason, I can't imagine why, you were to deny this, what would we have? We would have the house all dutifully permitted and constructed legally, and we would have a dirty septic system. It would make absolutely no sense to do that. The new, uh, advanced onsite wastewater treatment system will not adversely impact ESHA, the creek, or any of the oak trees, and it is in fact more protective of the environment, is, which has been documented ad nauseam. So, uh, I retain six, um, point four-three seconds on the clock, and I think I'll hold on to that for rebuttal, and I appreciate your time. If you have any questions right now, I'd be happy to answer them.
Did you say you'd be microdosing?
The, y- y- yes, actually. Uh, microdosing is, as opposed to just water flooding out of a septic tank into a leach line, you've got these much smaller lines. Okay, well, you, you threw it out there, Craig, so, yes, that's what I said. Thank you.
Do we have any speakers on Zoom that are other than John Yarsowski?
There's only one raised hand from Joe Drummond.
Okay, let's go for it. No, we have one. I don't, is there anybody else that's here to speak on this that didn't turn on a slip? No? Joe? You got her on there, Patrick?
Yeah, Joe, we can't hear you. Um. Oh, still nothing.
We love these moments of silence here in the chambers. As long as you're microdosing off of your septic system. All right, we're gonna go technical difficulty here. And, uh. Joe, if you're out there, we're wait, we're trying to get you queued up, so give us a second. All right, we're gonna take a five-minute recess, so everybody can use the restroom or whatever else they wanna do.
I encourage everyone, please don't discuss the item during the recess.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. or whatever else they want to do.
I encourage everyone, please don't discuss the item during the recess. Thank you.
Yes. All right, we're going to resume the meeting, and we are looking for a comment from Joe Drummond via Zoom.
Hi, can you hear us? Yeah, I can.
Okay, they'll come back, and then we'll call on you.
Oh.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to resume the meeting, and we are looking for a comment from Joe Drummond via Zoom.
Hi, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Joe, you can begin when you're ready. We can hear you.
Hello?
Joe, if you can hear me, we can hear you.
Oh, you can't. Okay, I can barely hear you, but if you can hear me, I'm actually just at CVS. I should have come over there because it was moved up. I couldn't make it. But I was just trying to be there in person, but this is a precedent-setting project, and let me tell you why. It seems in this city, if I have enough money, I can afford Don Schmitz. I can have a motel that is really a hotel in the wrong zoning area, which can have a pool that is private to paying hotel guests alone when only public pools are allowed, and build into a coastal bluff, which is also not allowed. In this city, you can also pull a permit for a party for 550 people in a residential zone and put up a structure larger than a house on a beach in the middle of a hurricane that takes a week to put up and a week to pull down, and no codes allow this. And you can also kick out local business owners to allow huge change floors to expand, which is totally against our formula retail ordinance. This is the type of violation of the codes that are rampant in Malibu, starting with this project. Any fire we build, over 10% and under 50% that is in Esha and also increasing their septic system needs to apply for a full-blown CDP, yet this project, after nine months, was issued a certificate of occupancy, not just for the septic system. Even after they started building the second story before the permit was issued, they didn't have to pay any code violation fines, nothing. The city just said, "It's okay, it's fine. We'll issue you a certificate of occupancy and permit legally," even though you weren't supposed to have... You were supposed to have a CDP for the entire build and not complete all the requirements. Meanwhile, I and several others are trying like hell to get our permit for our small little project without any progress. Why? Because we don't have deep pockets, and we aren't paying off people, obviously. There is something shady going on, and it's not good. You have two contractors and a pro-development attorney on your commission, so this will still keep continuing because you only care about developers and not us regular, real people who live here and are trying to get things done. And people who are city council members or planning commissioners can benefit from the system that is not fair and not right. Commissioner Smith, you sound sincere, and I hope you are with regards to small projects getting approved faster than these large products, but it's just not happening. I know a deck of larger than mine that was approved without a variance in our landslide area, no real requirements, nothing, because the applicant bribed the code enforcement officer with a girl and paid all kinds of fees, and they got their deck, like over the counter, no studies, like I've done online, and it's been almost three years. So it's just the applicant's word against his, and I know it's not, and I know it's happened. These are low, shady things in our city that needs to stop. And first, make it right. This project needs to be bought back for a full CDP for the entire build, with the full fees need to be paid. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe. Patrick, is there anybody else on Zoom for this?
Now, those are the raised hands.
Okay, thank you. Don?
Rebecca has my time back on there, and she's quick on the gun. But before you start that, can you put my PowerPoint presentation back to where I ended? And a lot of this, I'm going to move very quickly on because you've already seen it. Go ahead, Rebecca. The... But first, I want to address some of the general comments that Joe just testified to. And truly, my heart goes out to her. And I appreciate the plug that if you hire Don Schmitz, you can get anything done in the city. I wish that were true. I like to think we're fairly effective, but it just does not work that way. And she had a whole litany of complaints in regards to other projects that she disagreed with, but in regards to her own personal travails, I don't think there has been anybody in the city of Malibu that has put more personal treasure, time, and personal reputation on the line to try and come forward with substantive reforms to help people like Joe. And I have also donated tremendous amounts of time over the years to people that do not have the means. So, Joe, give me a phone call if I can help you out gratis. In regards to this particular project, though, she's just dead wrong. There's a full-blown CDP, which is before you tonight. Yes, there is. But the planning verification was appropriately issued to rebuild it plus 10%, which has been done over and over and over, and that has been the policy of the city council and the planning commission so that these homes, which were wiped out in the tragedy, the Woolsey Fire, can get rebuilt. And by the way, we still find ourselves, it's some four years later here, this has not exactly been a quick sprint. And there is no new square footage for this project. There's no exterior work, and the certificate of occupancy was granted for a duly permitted project that had a planning verification and had an APR and pole building permits. Everything was according to HOIL. There was no shenanigans that were involved with this at all. So I'll move quickly past all this because you've seen it, but there's a couple other points I want to make here. See how fast I can click. This was a concern that was raised by Commissioner Hill in regards to the map FEMA floodplain. This has been properly geo-referenced. This is an accurate mapping. You can see that even the old system wasn't going to be underneath the water on this, and we are pulling it back further from the creek. And of course, critically, the advanced wastewater treatment tank is set all the way back behind the house, and again, it will be sealed as opposed to the existing concrete tank, which can leak into the environment. Here's another very critical point. This is an exhibit of the overlapping fuel modification zones before the Woolsey Fire. As you know, we are in a Class IV fire zone, and LA County Fire Department requires 200-foot of brush clearance around all residences. And here it is today. There's no change in the fuel modification. There's no substantive change for the footprint, for the house that was rebuilt with the planning verification, and with the APR. We're not going to be touching the environment at all for the coastal development permit that is in front of you tonight, commissioners. The only thing that we are going to be doing is we are going to be improving the environment by taking a 60-year-old, dirty, septic system and replacing it with a state-of-the-art, advanced onsite wastewater treatment system. There's been a number of precedent cases here in the city of Malibu where you have approved similar reductions in setbacks from streams where it is environmentally appropriate. The reason I raise this is the variance application before you tonight, it does not constitute a special privilege. We're not asking for anything special. And again, as I put out earlier in these proceedings, if you think it through, if for some reason this application was not approved, we would just retain the dirty old, 60-year-old septic system, which would just make absolutely no sense. So with that, I want to go ahead. I know you've got a busy agenda, a big item after this. Thank you so much for the accommodation of moving us forward, and I am available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Don. Commissioners, who would like to start?
Just one question for Don. What was the original size of the house and what is it now, if this is approved?
Going to tap me with a not having my cheat sheet in front of me. That is in the staff report, but the square footage is not going to change from this entitlement action, which is before you. I do not have the exact numbers committed to memory. The planning verification approved the reconstruction of the same square footage that was built in 1960 plus 10%. And then I believe the APR for the additional square footage on the second story was for 754 additional square foot. None of that's going to change for the application that you're hearing tonight.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, a clarification, and then I think this is a question for John Yarszloski. I think, Don, you said that it has, the current version has 27 fixture units from the Gold Coast Geo Services report. The current version has 35, which is an increase over the 25 that previously existed prior to the Woolsey Fire. And then what we're adding here is up to 48, so from the original 25 to 48, we're basically doubling the fixture units. My question for John is the nominal flow, what do you call it? The design flow is 900 gallons per day. The dispersal field is rated at a capacity of, when you do the math, 1,000 gallons per day. So you're right up near the boundary of, in terms of what the field will accommodate in terms of what you're putting out of the house. What happens when you get a couple of inches of rain in a couple hours, or you get six inches of rain in 24 hours, like we had, you know, I don't know, 15 years or so ago? What happens when you get a big rainstorm and your gallons per day is joined by a bunch of water, ambient water? What effect might that have?
Isn't that when you have to take showers in the rain?
That's for John. No, I'm just saying in terms of, you know, how much they're putting out into the dispersal field together with a big rainstorm.
All right, John, you're there, and we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. So the way that we set these up is we do have equalization in the tank, so I would imagine it... We've never had a problem. So I designed probably hundreds of these types of systems in the city of Malibu. And on a flat, in general, on flat lots or flat disposal areas like this, where you think, you would think that you would have accumulation of water in the field from the rain event. We really haven't seen that. We haven't seen surfacing. We do put these down 18 inches, and we, the way that they're designed, we're not just putting it into normal fill material that you're taking off the site or whatever is there. We're actually putting a compo, putting a mulch in the mix into the topsoil, so there is more storage in the 18 inches than what we're actually putting into it. If it did merge with the wastewater, the wastewater, when it goes out into the dispersal field, is disinfected. It's treated, and a lot of jurisdictions, they'll let you put it, they'll allow you to put it down six inches. I've never done that. I believe that it should be 12 to 18 inches down, and on this one, it is 18 inches. So we do have additional capacity in the soil for an event like that. And I've never, in the time that I've been doing these, I've never had an issue with a system that was designed with adequate dispersal area, you know, based on these infiltration tests.
So Don Schmitz mentioned that you're not relying much on evapotranspiration.
I'm not relying at all on evapotranspiration.
Okay, that's good, because that would be impeded if you were having a big storm. Okay.
The way that we have to design the system, and Don and I had a discussion about this, and we worked, the evapotranspiration was being talked about quite a bit, and the way that we design these, and if you look at the GEO report, you were talking about that earlier also, the GEO report gives design criteria based on the actual amount of water the soil will take. And with that criteria, I can design the system for three bedrooms, six bedrooms, you know, 100 bedrooms, whatever, depending on how many tests there are. So the number of fixtures, the number of bedrooms oftentimes aren't even included in those GEO reports because it's in my report, or they take it from my report and put it into their report, because they're really just giving the criteria that I use for design.
Okay. And this, I'm not sure if this is for John or back for Don, but the previous design flow, the existing one, was 600 gallons per day. You're increasing that to 900, so 150% of what it was. The proposed dispersal field is 21 feet from the stream, and we've talked about what could happen in a storm or... So I guess my question is, are there any potential environmental effects from having 150% of the nominal design flow entering that ecosystem? It's clean water. We acknowledge that, but is, we're putting a little bit more water in there. Does that have any impact in any way?
I know how meticulous you are in details, Commissioner Hill. I think you misspoke. The, no, it's fine. The current drain field is 28 feet from the creek. We're pulling it back to 50 feet from the creek.
What I have from Planner Shaw was that the existing field is 15 for, oh, I'm sorry, from the floodplain. The dispersal field is 21 feet from the floodplain. Yeah, you're right, I misspoke.
Okay. It's not like you.
But nonetheless, the question is, the design flow is 150% of what it was. Does that have any potential impacts?
In my opinion, and from what I've looked at, it does not. Of course, Mr. Yarszloski has forgotten more than I will ever know about such things, so he should opine on it as well. But the increased setback, and it is true, I hope I was clear, we're not relying at all on evapotranspiration, but because of the shallow nature, that will, if you'll pardon the pun, transpire. But with the, you know, look, the existing system at 60 feet, or excuse me, that was built in 1960, being so close to the creek, best as we can tell, has never... daylighted or had any problems. I mean, hell, it was still working and was certified to be working. That's how we got the operating permit for the city for the planning verification reconstruction. So what we're pulling back with the state-of-the-art system, I don't think that you're going to have any problems, but Mr. Yaroslavsky should definitely opine on that.
Am I still on or am I muted?
Yes, John, go ahead.
Okay. I think that Don should be a poop engineer like me that's an expert in microdosing because he's, he's very good. You guys brought up the microdosing. But, so the way the system is designed, the, the size of the field and the, and the infiltration into the subsurface with the microdosing, it puts it out at a rate that you actually have things that happen that, that aren't in the design. What, you know, I designed for it all to be basically leached into the ground. But what happens is you put aerobic water into the field and it actually changes the composition of the soil and it makes it so that it does evapotransferate better. So in, in my opinion, having that, the additional flow, and that is because the city of, of Malibu considers that addition a master bedroom. That's why it went up 300 gallons instead of 150 if it was just a bedroom, and that's a code thing. What happens is that actually, it, it wouldn't have any impact because of the way that, that the system is treated in the, in the dispersal.
All right, great. Thank you very much, John.
No problem.
Do you have any more questions? Jeff?
I think I'm good for the moment, at least.
Okay. Jeff or Dennis? Dennis?
I moved as approved staff's recommendation.
I have a lot of questions.
Oh, I thought you were finished. Okay. Do we have a second on that? Do you want to comment again?
Yeah, I believe that we should hold a hearing and ask the questions and get the right answers before we make a vote.
That's what I'm saying. What's your question?
Okay, I've got several. One is the actual use of the property. This property is Zoned RR and RR has permitted uses, none of which are second dwelling units. And the very first use, the very first definition of the RR district under 1708020 permitted uses is one single-family residence per lot. Okay? Small family daycare, accessory uses as follows, billing, billings customarily ancillary to single-family residents, but not including, not including, but not limited to guest units 750 feet maximum, detached garage, barns, pools, houses, gazebo, sheds, greenhouses, non-commercial, recreational structures, but not limited to pools, spas, non-illuminated sports courts and corrals. And then it goes on to animals, crops, horses, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Now, in this particular case, on, on at least the drawings, this is labeled as an ADU. Unfortunately, there is no such thing in Malibu. One of the exemptions here is for uses is if it has an ADU ordinance established under California Section 65852.2, which may or may not happen in the next month or so, but it hasn't happened yet. There is no such thing as an ADU in Malibu. So we're, we're talking about a structure that was built not as a part of a house. It was built as a separate gym with no connection to the interior of the house, which if made into a dwelling unit, that dwelling unit could only be a guest house. And guest houses are not by definition allowed to have kitchens. They are not residences. And that's clearly in the, in the ordinances. So we have a permitted use, we have a use that would in fact turn this into a duplex. And this is not zoned for duplexes. This would be two residences in one building, which is the definition of a duplex, totally separated. This would have to be in multifamilies, some multifamily zone rather than an RR zone. So by definition, we can't approve this because it's, doesn't meet the LIP or RR permitted uses zone 17, I mean, code 1708.020. Now, this may be fixed at some point in the future with a, with whatever the city council comes up with ADU. But the proposal that we heard probably six months ago, we said that the only ADUs that would be automatically granted were internal. And this is definitely external. It has only one entrance by a stairway from the outside. And by the way, it does not have two exits, which the fire code requires. We're going to certify that this follows building and safety codes if we approve this, and it doesn't. So that brings into question what, why is this before us as a separate dwelling unit with a kitchen? No problem without a kitchen, big problem with a kitchen. It's not allowed. The accessory dwelling code, which has not been passed, but the, the state, state ADO code section is 65852.2. And it says clearly that you cannot use the ADU code unless you have a municipal ordinance that has been approved, which we don't have. There's a hearing reasonably soon. So that's, that's one of my big concerns. We've, I've, now, Richard will disagree with me, but I've been on the planning commission a long, long time, and I have been through many, many hearings where we told people, you can't have a kitchen. And then we had them say, okay, well, well, let's make it a, a poolhouse or a artist's studio or this or that. But they were never allowed a kitchen because that creates a dwelling unit, a full kitchen. And this has a full kitchen, refrigerator, sink, stove, bathroom, oven, the whole banana. So that's a problem to me because we should not ban the LIP. That's, these are the approved uses for the LIP. It's our code section. It's also in the LIP, but it's also municipal code. And I gave you the reference there. So that's one of my, my problems. My other problem is when I look at the plans for landscaping. Where are they? It clearly shows, if you look on page four of the staff report, it shows the ESHA and the ESHA buffer and the stream. It's on page four. In the landscaping plans on page L3, it shows a long wall, fence, they call it, but it's actually labeled on the plan, wall. If you go from left to right on the plan, on the stream side, and then a riprap that wraps all the way through the stream and all the way around the house back to the dispersal area. And I've seen nothing in our staff report that, what is it, fishing game or fishing streams or whatever is approved.
Can I just ask a question about that real quick of the applicant?
Sure.
Is, does that not all existing?
Through the chair, yes. On the issues which are being raised, there is some very old concrete, shotcrete on the embankment. You can see it's dramatically undercut. There's a couple boulders that were out there. It is not something that the applicant placed there. It looks, according to the aerial photographs, like it's been there for a very long period of time. Hence, no fish and wildlife was necessary for that. We did not apply for an ADU. We applied for a secondary dwelling unit, which in Appendix 1 Table B of permitted uses in the LIP for the city of Malibu, a, a second dwelling unit note to exceed 900 square foot is permissible, and you are allowed to have a kitchen in it as well. So I'll let your staff embellish upon that as necessary.
Okay, let me finish on this. To speak to that, each individual zone has individual requirements on what they can, are allowed to build. It's by zone, not by city. Okay? And that's why we do not have secondary unit, dwelling units on every house in town. That's what ADUs are all about, trying to get them. It's a total misstatement to say that you can come to this commission and get essentially a guest house with a kitchen. You can't. Okay? Now, as far as the riprap, it shows riprap from the wall all the way around to the street, which, driving by, I didn't see any riprap on the street. Okay? It's, this is new. Okay? Now, the planning is in front of it. Those little circle things are in front of this. They are also in ESHA. And, but the wall especially under, under our resolution number 22 and 23, boundary fencing shall be open, split design, blah, 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 blah. Second, fencing and walls are prohibited within ESHA, period. Okay? It's right here. We, we will vote for that when we vote. So these little technical things make a difference because this is a major stream. Okay? We still do not have the underpass going to Zuma Beach because of the flooding. It's been years.
What you're saying in regards to the fencing and that, that no fencing should be allowed on this property at all?
No, I'm saying it is allowed, but it says no fencing is allowed in ESHA.
Almost the whole property is in ESHA.
Well, that's the law.
No, I understand.
Okay, and that's the resolution.
I want to be very clear about that.
I'm not, it's not my opinion, it's what's in the resolution. The other thing is when you put fencing in an ESHA or you put boulders in an ESHA, it's just like putting armoring on a stream, on a beach. You need permission. You need, you need codes that allow it. You need engineering. You need fishing game to say, oh, you're not going to change the course of the stream. You need all this kind of stuff. It's not there. Okay? So that to me is like, let's look the other way. We don't want this house to flood if it gets, gets rainy, but it shouldn't because it hasn't in the past. So we don't need this extra armoring. We don't need this, it looks like about 70 feet of fencing in, in the ESHA. Okay? So that's, that's one thing that's very concerning to me. And I think Jeff's been to enough meetings to know that you don't just get a kitchen in your, in your guest house. Now, it says, another thing I want to bring up is a... On page 11 of 16, it talks about this supposed guest house or whatever it is. It says, while the creation of a second unit will take place within the existing structure. Okay? That's not, the existing structure is the house. Okay? This is a separate unit. It has no connection other than the floor to the house. It is built specifically to be separate. So that's something that we have to consider now. And I'm sorry to be so discombobulated, but doing this this week was kind of a mess. So what I'm after here is that number one, we have to eliminate the encroachments into ESHA because they have not been studied or approved.
Do you want to approve this and have all those items that are in the ESHA removed?
Yes, they say they have to be. They're not allowed.
So you want to remove all of this riprap?
No, no, no. I want to remove any development.
Any development.
If he's got some old cement down there, not my problem.
Okay.
Okay? That fence is in ESHA. It says you cannot do it, period, in our resolution.
Can I just?
Now, but the main thing is, this, I don't think this can be approved because it violates the RR zone. And there can be all kinds of arguments, gee, somebody got away with it somewhere. But this is an RR zone. It's a single-family residence zone. It's, it's not two families. It's not two residents. It's not a guest house. It's not allowed under 1708020. So I think the, the project should be approved without a separate residence or that residence should be considered a guest house and, and the, and the kitchen has to be removed.
Got it. Greg?
Yeah. I guess I'd like to have clear facts on how much of any of that ESHA impact is existing versus proposed, riprap fences, whatever. It's, it's kind of fuzzy to me, like, how much is new or old or what?
Right. Thank you, Commissioner Hill, through the chair. The, we've already discussed the old riprap was there, is going back decades, best as we can tell from aerial photographs. In regards to the fence, we submitted photographic evidence to the planning department that the fencing was there before. The reason that there's not a part of this application before you tonight for that chain links, chain link fences because the fence was there before there was an LCP, before there was a coastal commission, before there was a city of Malibu. So that is not part of our application and it is not a violation. And I would note that there is no violation aspects in, in the staff report.
So no development of any kind going into the?
Going into ESHA, no, sir.
Into the ESHA zone?
No.
Okay. Next question for the council. Thanks, Don.
Oh, I can ask you a question on the?
Yes, please.
Why does your diagram call it a wall instead of a fence?
I don't know what part of the diagram you're speaking.
L, L3. There's the wall. It says wall right there.
That's a retaining wall.
It says wall.
It says retaining wall.
Is it new or proposed or existing?
Only wall I'm aware of in that vicinity was the wall that's always been there for the driveway. Is that where it's located? All I have is reductions on the, on the easterly side of the driveway facing the creek. There's a very minor existing retaining wall there. Otherwise, it's just a chain link, an existing chain link fence.
Is that wall, is that wall more than three feet high?
No, sir.
Okay.
Okay. So just as a point of clarification on the code and interpreting it, Don mentioned something in, in the LCP that would allow the guest house, but the municipal code is more restrictive in this case. And so would take precedence and say that yes, in the zoning year, in this particular zone, you don't get this residence that has a kitchen. So that, that seems like a significant concern to me. I'm also sort of curious if the lack of two egresses to the space, if that is any different if you have a kitchen or don't? It doesn't seem very egregious as is, but if you're going to be building a kitchen and calling it a residence, then suddenly it does seem like you'd want two egresses. And then finally, this is a legal question for Patrick. Can we, in effect, sever this application and say, in some form, to, to vote and say, okay, we will approve the, the new OWTS, but not the ADU in this zoning?
So I mean, if the, excuse me, if the very, if the variance findings cannot be made for, in this instance, I guess you're saying for the conversion of the 508 square feet, then, you know, that is, that's that. That, that, that is not approved. In, in, in order to sever it, you know, I, I'm not sure if the, if the applicant would, 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 would want to move forward with that in terms of only part of, of the applicant's project. So yeah, that's, that's my answer, Commissioner Hill.
But it would be theoretically possible.
Anything is possible, Greg?
Sure, yes.
Well, we don't redesign projects for people, so, you know, yeah.
I was going to ask a question of staff, of Richard and Tyler, which is, can you please? I was going to ask a question of staff, of Richard and Tyler, which is, can you please clarify what is allowed in this zoning per the code? And whether or not this second unit, guest unit, however you want to call it, is allowed in this zoning, yes or no?
Certainly. So the first part, let's go with the LIP because it's simple. The LIP has a permitted table of uses in the rural residential zone. There's a little A with a superscript 1. Second units provided they are consistent with the requirements of LIP chapter, or section 3.6 residential development standards. So they are permitted as an accessory structure in the LIP. In the MMC, I know that there was a lot of reference given to 17.08-020A1, but if you continue to look down the page and get to subsection F, second units are allowed in the, per the MMC. And before I allow the city attorney to jump in on the government code section on that, there is also in both the LIP and the city's MMC, a definition of what a second unit is. Essentially, second unit and guest house are the same, with the difference that a second unit has a kitchen and a guest house does not. That's consistent in both codes. That is why this is a second unit, it's because of the kitchen aspect of it. And with that, I'll allow the city attorney to jump in on the, on the text of subsection F where it allows second units.
I'd like to point something out to you first. And if you read section F, it says, second units pursuant to government code section 65852.2, and I'll give you a copy of that, it does not allow that.
And so I, I have the code provisions and the government code up as well. I will echo the sentiments of Director Malika, and then similarly add that when subsection F says, second units pursuant to government code section 65852.2, that does not signify that a subsequent legislative act must be taken in order to say that a second unit is approved. That language stands by itself. As Director Malika said, subsection F, 17.08-020 is a permitted uses table, excuse me, permitted uses section. It states, second units pursuant to that government code. The, the reading that that subsection requires some subsequent action is not one that I agree with.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I want to make a comment on that.
John, hold on a second. Hold on. I have one more question for Richard. In regards to the comment that was made about ingress and egress for a second unit from the fire department, I don't know what the exact?
Certainly, so?
For a second store, you know?
Certainly.
Can you opine on that, please?
So per the California residential code section R311, only one means of egress is required.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to comment on this. It specifically says in code section, government code section 65852.3, that you may not use the ADU ordinance, which that is, unless the municipality passes its own ordinance. Specifically says that. We have not done that as a city. We do not have ADUs. That is a fact, and that's why we're going to have a hearing about it. And that's why this planning commission has already had a hearing to adopt that ordinance.
Thank you, John. Jeff?
Yeah, John, I think you need to read further into that piece of legislation because what that code section says is that if you adopt an ADU ordinance, it has to have these things in it. And by the way, if you don't adopt an ADU ordinance, these are the rules that we're going to apply allowing, excuse me, John, not yet, not yet. These are the rules we're going to apply until you adopt them. Now, in the past, you've made the argument that that ordinance doesn't apply to us at all because we're in the coastal zone, or because we're in a high fire zone, or whatever the argument is. But the legislation does say that. It says you pass an ADU ordinance, or if you don't, these are the rules that apply.
I hate to correct you, but we've been over this many times, and this is why we're passing an ADU ordinance. We received two letters from the coastal commission saying we are not covered. We have received nothing. There is no, nothing in, there is also an exemption for high fire zones and the coastal zone in this ordinance, okay? The city is not, and Don can testify to this, the city is not going through hearing after hearing after hearing, going to coastal commission, trying to work out an ADU ordinance because they don't have to. They have to. It's clear, plain law.
Excuse me, John, you're arguing that we should rely on this ordinance, and at the same time you're arguing that the ordinance doesn't apply to us?
Because that's what the ordinance says, says. The ordinance itself says that.
Okay, sounds like we can agree to disagree. We have a motion from Mr. Jennings, we have a second from Dennis, and I'd like to go for a roll call.
I'd like to make a motion.
I have another question, too.
Okay, go for your.
Would it be at all sensible to say, I don't know how soon the ADU hearing is, but to say, continue this if it's coming up in a few weeks, to continue this a month and decide it after we have an ordinance? I don't know, just a thought.
I just want to point out that maybe Don understands the law better than we apparently do, and knows that a challenge is easily made to this approval because of that, and it's not necessary.
Chair Peet? It's a fascinating discussion, but it's built on an erroneous premise. We haven't applied for an ADU. If you take a look at page 11 of 16 on the staff report, which you referenced before, it's a second unit, and your staff is absolutely correct that the codes for the city of Malibu and the LCP and the general plan allow second units. They cannot exceed 900 square foot, and they are only permissible as an ancillary use in this zone to the principal use, which is a single-family home. And that is why we applied for the conversion of a garage, which is some, Jim, excuse me, which is some 500 square feet, well below the 900 square foot limit, for a secondary dwelling unit. We're not asking for an ADU with all the other implications under state law.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, and in common to that motion.
Are you making a subsequent motion?
I'm making a motion that's voted on first. Okay, substitute motion, that this project be approved with the maximum wall in the Esha as three feet, because fences are not allowed, and that, and there's apparently an existing retaining wall. If it is, it cannot be approved over, it has to be approved unless it's over three feet. And that no kitchen be allowed because our code section, which Craig points out is more restrictive, does not allow it in an RR zone. There is no universal idea that you can go into a multifamily zone and add a guest house, or you can go into any other zone and add a guest house with a kitchen. It's just not true. And so that's my motion.
Do you have a second?
Hopefully I do.
John, this is what we've just been arguing around about. That section that I quoted as being more restrictive, Commissioner Jennings said, yeah, you look further down, you see section F, second units. We've just been talking all around this, so I don't, I don't see that, I don't see.
Read the whole sentence.
We've read it, second units pursuant to the government code section.
Right, so I think we should take a vote on that since we're violating government code section so-and-so. We should at least vote on it if we're going to violate it.
Do you have a second or no?
I, I don't understand what that government code section reference says.
Okay, so there's no second?
I don't, I would like to know if it's saying, yeah, you can have a second unit following this code section. I haven't heard a clear reason why, how that would allow it or not.
You've been hearing all the hearings for ADUs, what have you heard for hours and hours and hours about?
Okay, I need to know if we have a second, yes or no? This is taking way too long.
I would like, I would like to hear what that code section says.
Yeah, so I mean, Chair, that?
Well, the essential nub of it.
Well, look it up.
Patrick, Cliff Notes, baby, let's get it.
So I mean, it's, it was somewhat synthesized earlier by Commissioner Jennings. It is part of the state's, you know, lengthy and multifaceted legislation dealing with the ordinances for the creation of accessory dwelling units in areas zoned. As I said before, it is numerous pages. It lists certain requirements, certain sizes, what you, how you can and can't regulate them, things of that nature, a more substantive.
Does it, does it?
Hang on, please, please, Commissioner Hill, I mean, are you looking for the, you know, specific criteria, or what is it that you're, that you're looking for?
Well, what I'm hearing, then, trying to synthesize this, is that it, we wouldn't, this wouldn't be availing because we are in a high fire hazard severity zone and have an LCP, et cetera. So I, I mean, if, it's a lot to ask us to read 19 pages on this.
It says right in there, high fire zone. It says right in there. Well, look for it, look for it, it's there.
I would be happy to continue this, otherwise I think I would just have to say no.
Okay.
Well, do you mean you're not seconding it, or you want to vote?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay, so let's go for a, we're going to go for a roll call on the subsequent motion.
Vice Chair Mazza?
No.
This is for your motion. Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
Oh my God, no.
Chair Peet?
No.
Motion fails.
Motion fails. Let's go back to the first motion. We'll go for a roll call. It was made by Dennis, seconded by Mr. Jennings.
The first motion recommending staff approval, or staff recommendation for approval. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
No.
Vice Chair Mazza?
No.
Chair Peet?
Yes.
Motion fails.
We'll see you again, Don.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, gentlemen up here, do we need to take a recess? Are we good to go? I would like to hammer, but if we need to take?
Yeah, let's move on and get some work done.
I need to take a break.
of thirty-six feet in height, subject to the approval of a site plan review. That specific plan also included, or allowed for, marquee signs, which are also known as electronic messaging centers. Those are currently prohibited in the code, but with the LCP amendment, those would be allowed for the school site. The ESHA setback was modified by the specific plan. The buildings do propose a full hundred-foot setback, but the modified development standards allow for minimal development within the hundred-foot setback, which at no point will be closer than fifty feet. Some of those development improvements include parking areas, drive aisles, I believe Zone B for the fuel modification is allowed to occur between the fifty and hundred-foot setback. The specific plan also established maximum thresholds of grading for cut and fill. I'd like to note that these thresholds are inclusive of all grading categories, so all the understructure grading, any remedial grading, any non-exempt grading. The specific plan establish, establishes thresholds for maximum cut and fill. And to jog your memory, here is a copy of the existing and proposed campus plan. The top image is the existing site plan, which shows a lot of development within the hundred-foot buffer, and the bottom image is the master plan for the full implementation of the specific plan, which again will occur in four phases, between the next ten to fifteen And this is a site plan showing the master plan implementation by phase. Again, the item before you tonight is Phase One, and the, I guess that's the southwestern corner of the campus site, which shows. The first motion recommending staff approval, or staff recommendation for approval. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
No.
Vice Chair Mazza?
No.
Chair Peake?
Yes.
We'll see you again, Don.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, um, gentlemen up here, do we need to take a recess? Are we good to go? I would like to hammer, but if we need to take a.
Yeah, let's, let's move on and get some work done.
I need to take a break.
Okay, we're doing a quick break for you, Mr. Hill, and then we'll be right back. Thanks. All right. So, we definitely have some speakers on this, this evening. Do we have Zoom speakers on this as well, Patrick? And if so, how many approximately?
There's no raised hands yet.
Okay.
Oh, there's one, one raised hand.
One raised hand. All right, so we're going to go ahead and start with our staff report.
Good evening, Chair Peake and members of the Planning Commission. I'll be presenting this item tonight. The first few slides are an effort to give just a context of where, how we landed here tonight. This project proposes Phase One of the Malibu Middle and High School Specific Plan. If you recall, or some of you may recall, that plan was considered by the Planning Commission in May of last year, at which time recommendations were made to the city council. The council has subsequently adopted the specific plan and the development standards to amend the city's local coastal program and the city's municipal code. The CDP before you tonight will not become effective until the Coastal Commission certifies the LCP amendment. That hearing will occur this Friday, at which time there's some suggested changes to that LCP amendment, and it will come back to the council for adoption, and then back to the Coastal Commission, after which time the CDP will become effective. And I could be happy to, like, run that again if you need some, if you need me to do that. Let's see here. This project is located on three, well, the specific plan is located on three of nine properties that are owned by the school district, located in the Malibu Park neighborhood. The project site size for the specific plan as a whole is a little under fifty acres in size. On this aerial photo, I have highlighted the area for Phase One, which is located on the area formerly, that's been vacated by the former Juan Cabrillo School. The specific plan was, that was, that was adopted, modified several development standards, four of which affect the CDP before you tonight. Increased building height was, was approved by the council that allows a new threshold of thirty-six feet in height, subject to the approval of a site plan review. That specific plan also included, or allowed for, marquee signs, which are also known as electronic messaging centers. Those are currently prohibited in the code, but with the LCP amendment, those would be allowed for the school site. The ESHA setback was modified by the specific plan. The buildings do propose a full hundred-foot setback, but the modified development standards allow for minimal development within the hundred-foot setback, which at no point will be closer than fifty feet. Some of those development improvements include parking areas, drive aisles, I believe Zone B for the fuel modification is allowed to occur between the fifty and hundred-foot setback. The specific plan also established maximum thresholds of grading for cut and fill. I'd like to note that these thresholds are inclusive of all grading categories, so all the understructure grading, any remedial grading, any non-exempt grading. The specific plan establish, establishes thresholds for maximum cut and fill. And to jog your memory, here is a copy of the existing and proposed campus plan. The top image is the existing site plan, which shows a lot of development within the hundred-foot buffer, and the bottom image is the master plan for the full implementation of the specific plan, which again will occur in four phases, between the next ten to fifteen And this is a site plan showing the master plan implementation by phase. Again, the item before you tonight is Phase One, and the, I guess that's the southwestern corner of the campus site. So the CDP before you tonight includes the construction of a new two-story high school building, which is proposed at thirty-six feet in height. The building size is roughly sixty-eight thousand square feet. The application also includes the after-the-fact relocation of five portable buildings, site improvements, which include the new marquee sign, a flagpole, pedestrian gates, and fencing, ESHA restoration, and grading. ESHA restoration I just mentioned, reconfigured parking and circulation for this portion of the, of the campus, which will result in additional parking spaces. I believe about sixty-one, fifty-one new parking spaces will be provided by Phase One. There will also be a new drop-off and pickup area, which is, will be, was, which would be ideal to pull traffic away from Morning View Drive. The scope also includes a modification to the septic system, and it also includes the demolition of, there's some remaining components from the former Juan Cabrillo campus, which will be fully removed with this application. Here, depicted here is the Phase One site plan. Along the western border of the campus side is the ESHA, which, which is proposed for restoration. It also shows the areas for the new parking areas, and in the center of the project site is the new high school building, and the, the new drop-off and pickup area in the southeastern corner of the project site. Depicted here are some building elevations. The next couple of slides include photos of the story poles. I attempted to highlight the poles so you can kind of see against the backdrop of the sky, but this shows the, the roofline configuration of the proposed high school building. This is looking south towards the ocean, and this is looking north from Morning View. Well, from inside the property, on the southern portion of the property. And here's a rendering of the proposed high school building. The next series of slides include some modified conditions. Like I mentioned, the Coastal Commission will be considering the local coastal program amendment this Friday. Concurrent with the Coastal Commission's processing of that LCP amendment, the city has been processing this coastal development permit application. So we kind of have two processes that are working in tandem. As a result of the suggested modifications for the LCP amendment, the Coastal Commission has recommended some modifications to the project conditions for Phase One. Essentially, these modifications strengthen the language for the ESHA restoration. I believe it also includes more specific details for the ESHA restoration. I provided these next few slides that show the strikeout and underline for the, to reflect the modification. I'll defer to Patrick if I actually need to read all this language. I mean, I can, but just wanted to, you know, put that out there. And this slide, this is the existing language. Minimal changes here, minimal strikeouts, and, and I think this one doesn't really have any, yeah, one new word. Subsection E for this condition will be removed, and it will be replaced with this language here. So both of these subsections are new language for the conditions in your draft resolution. And again, this language is included as part of the suggested modifications from the Coastal Commission. Oh, I should have clarified, too. These were conditioned specific to lighting for the campus.
Renika?
Yes.
This says, part of this says that the dark sky shall apply?
Yes.
Then why are all these other provisions in there? They're already in the dark sky? Like, like the last one that was crossed out, the fencing one?
Yes, these were, so some of the suggested modifications that the Coastal Commission is recommending, the city has included some of the provisions from the dark sky ordinance that would actually be included as part of the LCP amendment. I believe, because the LCP amendment isn't certified yet, I believe this was the Coastal Commission's effort to make sure we capture some of their concerns in the CDP approval for Phase One.
So, it doesn't, it doesn't actually say they have to follow the dark sky ordinance?
No, initially, and I believe the specific plan that was before you, we actually had that language as part of the LCP amendment. One of the suggested modifications from the Coastal Commission is that we remove a reference to the dark sky ordinance, because it doesn't appear in the LCP. So rather than have that language as part of the development standards for the specific plan, we actually transferred some of the regulations from the dark sky ordinance, if that makes sense.
Well, yeah, it sort of does, but like, we had all this discussion about the swimming pool and, you know, different lighting and blah, 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 that's all gone, right?
Um, yes, because the council decided to require the pool lighting to be consistent with the dark sky ordinance.
So, we have to see what the, where I'm a little bit confused here, is we're doing this all before Coastal decides, and then we're gonna do it again? Is that it?
You mean for the CDP?
Yeah.
No, if, if the item is approved tonight, it will be contingent on the Coastal Commission's certification of the LCP amendment. I believe part of the concern was that, you know, the suggested modifications that the Coastal Commission is recommending, they don't affect the scope of the CDP that's before you tonight. Essentially, the suggested modifications really deal with the ESHA restoration. I believe they wanted to include some triggers of when certain components of the ESHA restoration plan would be implemented, but it doesn't affect the scope.
Well, isn't, isn't lighting scope? I mean, how do we know what kind of lighting is gonna be there? We don't, do we?
It's conditioned here.
Here, but when it gets to Coastal, it can change, right?
There's still, whatever you, whatever is approved by the Planning Commission would be what the school district would have to adhere to. So if the Coastal Commission decides to wipe all these conditions, all of this language out of the LCP amendment, this will still be part of the conditions of approval for Phase One. Is your concern that the Coastal Commission will approve something that would be less stringent? Is that the concern?
No, I'm just trying to figure out what we're approving, because your first slide said exterior lighting must comply with dark sky ordinance. And that's apparently not in there for the Coastal Commission, right? Or is that in our CDP?
This is in, this is existing language in the Coastal permit before you tonight.
So, if we approve this the way it is given to us tonight, that's gonna be approved?
Yes.
They have to follow dark sky?
Yes.
And no matter what the Coastal Commission does, they still have to follow dark sky?
That's correct.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Okay. So, condition number thirty-two, I believe these are conditions that begin what's required of the ESHA restoration. These are some additional added language recommended by the school district and, and accepted by the Coastal Commission. And again, these, these modify, this modified language just basically adds more specificity for the ESHA restoration. Again, I'd be happy to read it all into the record if you would like me to, but I just wanted to show it visually here. This slide shows modified language for conditions thirty-three and thirty-four, again, all related to ESHA, to ESHA restoration. And then lastly, condition number forty-six was actually included in error. You may see this language on the conceptual approval from the city biologist. We actually transferred that language from her referral into the project conditions. The city biologist confirmed today that this language was in error, so we agreed to strike it out. Okay, today's staff has received correspondence from two individuals. One from a representative of the Malibu Coalition for Slow Growth, who had several concerns, most of which were related to the modified development standards that were approved by the council and don't really affect, or are related to the project before you tonight. Again, the purpose of the specific plan and the LCP amendment is to create modified development standards for the school site. The concerns were related to the maximum height thresholds that were approved in that LCP amendment. Again, these were maximum height thresholds, they're not by rights. They are subject to a site plan review. Anything above eighteen feet is subject to a site plan review. To date, staff has not received any correspondence related to view blockage from their primary residence, or of any scenically impressive, impressive views from their home. There was also a concern about the ESHA, the modified ESHA development standards. There was a concern about the pool lighting, which again, isn't a part of the project scope before you tonight. There was also a concern or a question about declining student population, and if this new high school building is overbuilding the site. I know this came up during the environmental impact report and the review of the specific plan as a whole. Then I'm gonna defer to the school district to address that specific issue. There was also a letter of correspondence from a neighbor of the site, and I believe she had comments on the specific plan as well. She echoed some of the concerns raised by the Malibu Coalition for Slow Growth relating to the pool lighting, concerns about the height, concerns about the electronic messaging center, and there was a concern about bus barns, which I believe originally were proposed as part of the specific plan to relocate those bus barns. They will be removed, I believe as part of Phase Three, Phase Four, but the relocation at the site has not been determined yet, but that's many years down the line, that's not part of the scope before you tonight. And with that, that concludes my presentation. Staff recommends adoption of the resolution before you as amended, approving the subject coastal development permit and the associated discretionary requests. And I'm available for any questions. Schools district staff is not gonna be presenting tonight, but they are also available to respond to any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Renika. I know John has a question for you before we go to.
I know John has a question for you before we go to public comment.
You totally confused me in the beginning about the appealability of what we do tonight. And it sounds to me like it's after a second hearing at Coastal Commission?
No, Pat, would you like to address that? I know there's been some conversation between the city attorney's office and the school district to clarify when the CDP becomes effective or when the appeal period begins and ends.
Sure, so as Ms. Brooks said earlier, that the, that the condition, I believe it's number four. It says the CDP is not issued and in effect until, one, the city LCP amendment number 21-002, and list some other, you know, descriptive language, receives final certification by the California Coastal Commission. And two, upon LCPA certification, all appeal and all appeals on CDP number 21-068 have been exhausted. So that's when.
Okay, so that's years, that's years from now? That's months from now? How would anybody know when, when it happens?
Correct, so I mean, it is, we, we, we do this not all the time, but it's, it, it has been a practice that this commission has done where you condition a CDP on a subsequent approval by the California Coastal Commission. And that's exactly what we are doing.
So once the Coastal Commission approves it, doesn't it have to come back to the city for their approval of any changes?
If the California Coastal Commission modifies the LCP amendment, you are correct. It has to come back to the, to the city. And then, of course, the city does its process whether or not to agree with those changes, correct?
And then, once they decide that, then it goes back to Coastal?
Coastal Commission, correct.
And then what we do tonight?
Would be, yes.
When Coastal Commission approves it?
Correct.
And then we don't object to that? How is that date set? Is there a hearing where we don't object?
How is?
Well, usually the Coastal Commission makes some kind of tweak.
John, I don't think the date's yet, and it's very clear here that it definitely feels like the cart is before the horse, but that's okay.
Well, no, I'm just, you know.
So you, you're correct, that I don't, I can't tell you, unfortunately, we have no control.
No, I don't know, I don't need the date, I just need the process. If somebody wanted to appeal this?
Correct.
Which I don't, okay? Because it hasn't passed yet, but how would they know? When? Is the city going to say, okay, this is now declared effective? And now you've got 10 days to appeal?
Correct, so I will, I will defer to Director Malika on the, on the way that we, I mean, but I assume once the LCPA amendment is, if it is approved and signed off on by the city and Coastal, it won't be done in secret, it will be very, very public.
But will that have any relationship to this hearing? Will, will, will it be a notice sent out that this is now final?
A few questions.
Because that's when you do the 10 days.
Gotcha. So like any other project, this project was noticed. And like any other project, after tonight, if somebody wishes to file an appeal, they have 10 days to do so. The, the LCPA will come back to the city. It is assumed, and it's a staff recommendation from Coastal on Friday, there are some changes to the ESHA requirements, I believe. That language has been, we've been working very closely with the Coastal Commission as a district as well. We anticipate that our council ideally won't have any concerns with that, those ESHA changes. And the council ideally in the month of October will hear the local coastal program amendment and also the ZTA for its acceptance. Then that goes up to Coastal. The Coastal Commission then, as Commissioner Masah stated, they will then notify, the executive director will notify the commission that the city has accepted the changes. At that time, the city will then forward the notice of final local action to the Coastal Commission per their direction. And the Coastal Commission will open, like any other appealable project, a 10-day, 10-working-day appeal period. So there's no sort of special noticing. This will follow like we do any other project with the exception that we're going to hold off on sending the NOFA to the Coastal Commission until, my guess is they'll probably hear it in November. If that's the case, we'll send it up the day after the November hearing.
So you started out saying it starts tonight for the 10 days, and then now it seems like it starts after Coastal's done with everything?
The Coastal, with appealable CDPs, there's a local appeal period. That's 10 days after this body makes a determination. And once that 10 days runs out, we send what's called a notice of final local action to the Coastal Commission. And they then have a subsequent 10-working-day appeal period. So the city's appeal period, as far as I understand, will start once a decision is made by this body. And then it's the, per the direction of the Coastal Commission, we send the notice of final action, local action to them after they certify the LCPA.
So you could, you have to appeal to the city now? But once you send the final action to the Coastal Commission, then you appeal to them then? So one can be now and one can be a year from now?
So if somebody files an appeal next week, we will not be sending this to the Coastal Commission until that appeal has been heard and decided upon by the city council. That, that puts a, that puts a stop mechanism in this chain of events until the council has their opportunity to render a decision.
Okay, so the council, so somebody chooses to skip the city. They can wait until Coastal Commission action and then appeal to Coastal Commission?
That is correct. If someone chooses to, to not appeal this to the city and just appeal it to the Coastal Commission, they could do as you say, once the Coastal Commission opens their appeal period.
Where's my, okay. Thank you. Glad you understand it.
Okay. Just hearing this, Coastal Commission on Friday, God forbid, nobody does anything. Coastal Commission, city council, then back to Coastal Commission? We're up against it as it is? Is it, when it gets back to Coastal, is that a formality of just a signature? Or is that a whole nother hearing?
It's my understanding, it's a formality of the director just reporting it at the hearing. There's no appeal period or anything like that. The executive director will state that the city of Malibu adopted the modifications by Coastal.
Man, we're right up against it if that's the case, right? So, okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you. We're now going to move on to public comment. And we are going to, how many public comments do we have on Zoom?
Just one still.
Okay, let's go ahead and start with that. No, no, we have, I have public here. Can we start with the Zoom one? Or do you want me to start with the? Okay, just, I was just joking. Just making sure you guys are paying attention. All right, Joe Drummond, and you will be followed by Wade Major.
Hi, I appreciate, I'm, I'm here now. I appreciate Parker and you all for letting me speak at the last thing. This is something that is for Malibu families, for Malibu parents, to attract, to attract families back to the school. I mean, I've had two kids graduate in the last four years, and I have a senior this year in Malibu High School. They have lived through the mold, the terrible facilities. It's, it's just a nightmare, as some of you might know already. And we need these new buildings. If it doesn't block anyone's view and the bus barn is not put in the Equestrian Center, I think then it's fine. It's, this is something that I would not approve anywhere else except because it is serving, family and residents serving. And it's, we, we need a state-of-the-art high school. We need a state-of-the-art middle school. And we've been waiting over 10 years for this. And I, I really do support it and I hope that no one appeals it. And because we need all four phases to go over the next 10 years. We need them done quickly. And we need this school because it will increase the school population, this I know. I, I, we have, we need the new auditorium. We need, we need the same better, I mean, we'll never have better than Santa Monica, but we need at least almost the same kind of facilities. We just really, really need this to pass, so. And I know that sounds crazy because of the heights and all of that, but if it's not blocking anyone's view and it's going to be state-of-the-art and beautiful, then I think we should definitely approve it. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe. Wade?
Craig, I don't know if you ever had the privilege of having Mr. Tucker stick the eraser end of a pencil in your ear, but it was.
I didn't get that far.
I got that, and I deserved it.
I'm just going to add that I spent a lot of time at the Yon Flagpole.
All right. Good evening, commissioners. I'm speaking here on behalf of AMPS, Advocates for Malibu Public Schools, which helped initiate the path to an independent Malibu Unified School District nearly a decade ago. That dream is finally nearing realization. And the proposed high school campus will serve as both its flagship and an emblem of our community's resilience. My personal roots on this matter run deep. My father first lived in Malibu in the late 1920s, and he fell in love with it. Many decades later, he moved back permanently to build a family here. This is my hometown, and I'm proud to have attended its public schools and to now be a public school parent. But for even, even for those of us so rooted, we have always been painfully aware that our destiny is not fully our own. We've been a city now for over 32 years, and we've had a high school and our own self-contained K through 12 pathway for 31 of those years. But we've never had our own independent school district, nor a standalone high school campus separate from the middle school. We are now on the cusp of both. I believe I speak for the majority of Malibu when I say that schools are the beating heart of a community. And our cityhood has been less than complete without the ability to administer the educations of our children. I call your attention to the last sentence of Malibu's vision statement. Quote, "The people of Malibu are a responsible custodian of the area's natural resources for present and future generations," close quote. Please let us not take that charge for granted because there's great wisdom in it. For the people of Malibu to continue to be responsible custodians, we must nurture and empower those future generations to whom we will pass that responsibility. A new Malibu High School under the administration of our own Malibu Unified School District is where we will at long last begin to make the promise of Malibu's vision statement a concrete reality. It will serve as a beacon of all that Malibu is and a magnet to those families who should wish to join us in that mission and build their lives here, just as our forebears did, as my parents did, and as the parents of so many in this community and many in this room. If you vote to approve this resolution today, it will open in time to welcome students in fall of 2025. All of us here know many of those students and their families. We know how exceptional they are and that we can proudly entrust them with this community's future. They deserve this, and we owe it to them. I urge you to approve this vital community resource today and strengthen the promise of Malibu's tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Wade. Carl, followed by Seth Jacobson.
Good evening, commissioners. First, I want to thank Jeff Jennings and all the other parents and the activists 30-plus years ago who went through the process to get us a high school right here in Malibu. I didn't get that, but at least my daughter just graduated from there, so much appreciated. But I'm here as the chair of the Facilities Advisory Committee that Malibu has. And so I'm one of nine Malibu residents who are facilitating this to take this through. And do not forget, this was a $200 million or $195 million Malibu-only bond. So this was voted on specifically by Malibu residents for Malibu all the way through. So I urge you tonight to get us this coastal development permit as soon as we possibly can, please, tonight. We need to get started building. We're a year late now, please let us get moving. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Seth?
Hi, Commissioner Seth Jacobson. I'm a member of the SMMUSD Financial Oversight Committee, and I'm also a proud member of AMPS. I wanted to talk about four things tonight. First of all, encourage you, from a financial standpoint, to move expeditiously on this motion, primarily because of the cost issues. We looked at it at the FOC, and we've looked at all the bond measures, in fact. And any delay will further jeopardize this beautiful building that's been designed. And to Commissioner Smith's point, we're up against the wall on it, and I think you all can do the responsible thing. Number two, I want to address this issue of declining enrollment. We need a state-of-the-art school. 13 years ago, it was a dream of mine, and Commissioner Jennings remembers, when we started on this path, putting, believe it or not, lights on the football field. That was quite an experience. But it was the first step, and here we are, close to bringing a beautiful new high school building to, to this area. The, the high school football lights created a community. This is going to create community. It's going to bring students back. Parents are going to come back, families are going to come back. So that's an important thing. The third measure I'd like to mention is this issue of the ESHA. Having been on a lot of the committee meetings and involved in the process, I think, and having a student that went to Juan Cabrillo, three students, actually, I think the Coastal Commission, working closely with the school district, has done an excellent job protecting the ESHA and protecting the viability of that area. And then lastly, but most importantly, I think that I'd like to thank all of you for the work you've done and commissioners and the council members behind me for committing to what Wade mentioned, which is creating our own viable school district by having our own high school building. So I encourage you tonight to do the right thing and to make this happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Seth. Now time for Zoom speaker, Patrick.
Valerie Seba.
Hi, so I am a, thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. We actually moved here about 10 years ago because of the school. I'm the mom of a student that's already graduated and one that's a junior this year in high school. I really, it's obvious, but I just have to state it again. Schools are really the heartbeat of a community. They're, they're really what brings families to the community. We came here because the school was highly rated. We got here, we kind of then found out that the school had problems with PCBs and toxins in, in the different buildings. And, you know, it's, my kids now won't ever benefit from this new building. My daughter's going to be gone. But I'm still here tonight to kind of push you along to do the right thing on this. It was really sobering to hear the Coastal Commission call out the city of Malibu as insincere partners in pushing this project to fruition. And I just really want to believe that that was, you know, oversight, staffing issues, you know, just, you know, maybe a few drop balls. Because the citizens of Malibu actually voted to tax themselves to have this school. So this is, you know, you're really looking at the will of the people. And I just can't urge you enough to do the right thing and get this project going. We're going to lose the ability to have this school if we keep delaying. You know, it's, it's already overdue, as the previous speaker mentioned. I, I just can't emphasize enough how strongly myself and other moms that I've talked to feel about this. I'm a physician. These, the toxins in this school are not a joke. I mean, these, the staff members that work there every day and the kids that go to school there every day, they shouldn't have to wonder if they're going to get cancer because of where they went to school. You really need to do the right thing on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any more speakers?
Those are all the speakers.
All right, thank you. All right. It's your moment to shine, boys. Oh, do you have a comment? No problem, we'd love to hear from you.
Good evening, thank you so much. I'm Dr. Shelton. I am the superintendent for Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District. This project is very important to our educational partners. And when I talk about our partners, that's our parents, those are our students, and as well as our staff. We have planned an educational space that I believe will be state-of-the-art. It will provide opportunities for our kids to explore, as we've said before, to develop their curiosity, to empower them, to create a sense of. to empower them, to create a sense of belonging, and to ensure that they are successful citizens of our community. And part of that is the education and the space that we provide to allow that to occur. So all I'm asking tonight is that you continue to support our efforts to ensure that we have a successful completion of this building. And I know that you will be able to do that for us, and I appreciate all the work that you have done as a commission. And it's nice to hear that we have alum that are on the stage here, and I appreciate what you will continue to do. So I will reserve the rest of our time. Thank you so much, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Dr. Shelton. Craig, go for it.
Okay, I've, I've got a couple or several sort of housekeeping threshold questions, and then some observations, and maybe some more stuff later. So just quickly, for staff, at the time of the specific plan, we didn't have a public works on traffic mitigation measures. That's been integrated now?
That's correct, and it was adopted as part of the mitigation monitoring and reporting program.
Okay, and then the specific plan pointed out issues around tilling of the, near the Blue Line stream. Richard reported that there was no permit for that found at the time. Have you, have you sorted that out now?
Yes, the Coastal, the school district has recently submitted the CDP application to restore that area.
Okay. What about PVDs, primary view determinations? Do, have we had any come up on this? And, and is it possible that this could have been skewed because of the moratorium on obtaining PVDs post-Wolsey in the Malibu Park area? Have we, have we talked about that at all?
Well, I can tell you that we have had no request for PVDs for this building, and the school district can attest. Story polls have been up since November of last year, so there's been plenty of opportunity for someone to express concerns about the increased height. I'll defer to Richard on the moratorium on PVDs.
The moratorium only prevents someone from claiming a new primary view determination. If there was one on file prior to the fire, then we would, if we received... Like anything, we, we do it with the, the single-family homes as well. If somebody would have raised that issue, we would have gone out, looked at it, because the intent of the code is not to allow for new development to intrude into that PVD.
Part of my question there was that I only recently learned that the moratorium was lifted, sort of incidentally learned that. So I don't know if that, but presumably, everybody in the neighborhood is aware that they could do that if they wanted.
Yeah, it's the structures. Landscaping, I think, still has time to grow in, because they, they put, I believe, two deadlines in there, one for structures and one for landscaping. But yes, if someone would have contacted us, we, we definitely would have followed up on it.
Okay, and then what? The staff report says the project's height and mass are characteristic of the existing development. What is the tallest existing building? Do you know, Fan?
I do not. We did present that information with the specific plan to see a comparison of the proposed redevelopment compared to what's there today. I don't have that information in front of me.
Okay, well, I'll talk more about height as we go here. And then my final sort of threshold question is, on the lot merger, we, we didn't hear anything about that, I don't think, tonight. But I'm just, I'm curious if, if that's, how permanent that is? If, for example, the district wanted to sell off a small piece in the future, effectively subdividing, would, would that be more readily reversible than might be the normal case when someone wants to subdivide? Or is it, that would, they, there, once it's merged, that's it? There's no, there's no chopping off anything in the future?
I mean, they can with another CDP application, and the subdivision would have to comply with the lot development criteria related to, I believe it's just lot size, maybe depth and width, possibly. But once it's merged, it's merged.
But the, the district's merger is no different than anybody else doing a lot merger?
That's correct. That's correct.
All right, so I, I just want to have some, I have some observations here. I completely appreciate the need for a new school, and keep that in mind as I go through some of these numbers and try to make sense of this. But I, I'd like to get some context around the, the need for the scale of it. The site plan review opens the door to considering neighborhood character and things like scale, which is also relevant to whether the ESHA impact could be further reduced. And incidentally, all these concerns about cost overruns could be diminished if a somewhat smaller project might be more appropriate, though, of course, costs are expressly not something we're supposed to be thinking about up here. There was no discussion of the need in the specific plan hearing, and so I'd, I'd just like to understand that. I think some of the public might too, with respect to the scale of what we need to do here. There, yes, there are a number of stated goals, such as separating middle and high school students, and there's a list of 11 project objectives in the DEIR, Section 7.2.1. They're all very laudable. They're all good. But again, about the need, it doesn't appear so in any of the documentation. So I, I've looked at some of the declining enrollment things, and when I sent an email to Steve Masetti and asked about what some of those numbers were, I, I just want to go through those for perspective here. Because we have this, we've had a background drop in enrollment since 2008 of 37%, 27% of which happened prior to Wolsey. So Wolsey's only part of that. And we, we know all the reasons about investment properties and, and prices being too high for families with kids to be able to afford it, et cetera, et cetera. We're, we're on a downward trajectory. So, okay, so the plan in front of us, all the paperwork, is based on an expectation of 669 students, grade six through 12, the whole thing. And for that now, according to Steve Masetti's numbers, is now, for this year, is actually 623 students. And I asked him if there was a way to, what that might be 10 years from now, say, and he came back with a number provided by predictive enrollment analytics, showing a projected decline of 190 students in grade 612 from 20, from today through 2031, eight years from now. So we've got planned on paper that we've been looking at, 669, yet currently, we have 623, a drop of 9% from the plan. And then the difference between the plan and the projected 433 eight years from now, that's a drop of 35%. So sort of, you know, as a first rough cut, this project could maybe be 2/3, 3/4 the size of what's been proposed. Now, looking at it in terms of the number of classrooms, currently, there are 60 classrooms. That's nominally about 11 students per classroom. If nothing were built, if we just kept what we had, if somehow those bungalows could keep going, eight years from now, 433 students would mean seven students per classroom with, with the existing thing. So I also asked Steve for, you know, some context and perspective. What's required by law, or what's the, and what's the desired student-classroom ratio? The legal requirement ranges, it's dictated by the collective bargaining agreement, and it ranges, depending on the type of class, from 28 to 35 or so students per room. Again, we're talking about maybe being down to seven students eight years from now. For the high school alone, now we're talking about just the part that we're looking at tonight, Phase 1. There are 370, I'm sorry, 307 students projected for opening day. There are 27 classrooms proposed. That would be 11 students per classroom. By 2031, if that number drops proportionately to the overall projection, just for sake of argument, that would be 35, 35% drop, that would be 200 high school students fitting in at a rate of seven students per classroom. And then, plus, we have 18 multipurpose rooms for conferences, collaboration, teaming, different, you know, good uses, and you definitely need some of those rooms. But given that a student can only be in one room at a time, that appears to make the effective ratio of students per room down to around four students per room by 2031. So I, the numbers I see don't really justify the entire scale of this project. It seems like it was designed and conceived, and the vision was from a different era, and maybe there's a way to dial it back a little bit. On the height, the height, I think, is also problematic. I think it's inconsistent with the policies and provisions of the, the general plan. We haven't really addressed in this situation. And, and that's the first question, is what authority does the general plan have if we already have this specific plan? And Section 1.3.1, 1.3.1 of the LIP expressly states, quote, "If there's a conflict between provisions of the Malibu LCP and a provision of the general plan, or any other city adopted plan resolution ordinance, not including the LCP, the LCP shall take precedence, and the development shall not be approved unless it complies with the LCP provision." So that basically says that something prohibited by the LCP cannot be permitted just by relying on the general plan. If it's prohibited, you can't just look at whatever the, but conversely, there, there is no converse provision that says that something nominally allowed by the LCP can't be, can't still be impermissible or contrary to the general plan. In other words, the general plan can still speak to the permissibility of this project, can color or, or even overrule an approval of the LCP. Now, I think this project would violate the Vision and Mission Statements requirements in maintaining rural character. By definition, rural character precludes buildings over two stories, once or over 28 feet. Once a building goes beyond that, it's urban. And in a rural environment, I think a one- or two-story school is appropriate, and I don't know how you'd need, you know, 36 feet for two stories. The definition of rural provided in the general plan, it's sort of long. I'll pull out just a few phrases on it, but it's about "respect for nature, residential privacy, preserving open space, predominance of natural topography and vegetation over the built environment, creating the feeling, scent, sound, and visual presence of country, low-density and low-intensity land uses subordinate to the natural setting," et cetera. Further, the general plan has a section just on the Malibu Park neighborhood, Section 1.6.9. It says specifically in part, "The rural character of the Malibu Park neighborhood is expressed by the low ranch-style houses and the agricultural uses of the undeveloped land." There's more in there about Malibu Park, but, but that's kind of the, the vision for what this neighborhood is supposed to be like. So 36 feet doesn't seem to fit with the general plan. Now, I don't expect to persuade a majority of the Commission of that, but I think it's important that we, you know, not just ignore the imperative to maintain rural character, because I think we could, a, a state-of-the-art, completely cutting-edge school could happen in a, in a somewhat down-scaled configuration. Now, that said, enough pontificating. I, I have a couple of questions about some of the material things. The grading, the total's almost 25,000 cubic yards proposed in Phase 1. That's 1,800 truck trips, 30 per day over several months. I don't understand, that, that seems like a lot of, Dennis, you'll have a comment on this. A lot of grading for a site that's previously been built on. It's equivalent to, if an Olympic swimming pool is about 3,000 cubic yards, you're asking to excavate eight Olympic swimming pools from a site that already, you should, should be able to just build two stories right on it, pretty much. So that, that's of interest to me, and then...
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Could I add a point of clarification on the grading?
Yeah.
I meant to mention this in, as part of my staff report. On page 13 of the staff report, where there was a description of the total cubic yardage of grading, I misrepresent, well, I made a mistake regarding the number of daily truck trips. I believe I mentioned 30 truck trips a day.
Yes, yes.
There will be 30 trucks, and each will have up to three truck trips a day. And no one could correct me if I mischaracterized that. But still the same number of truck trips total, but there will be 30 trucks, and each will have three, up to three truck trips a day.
So it's still the 1,800...
That's correct.
...trips, but it would happen over a shorter period of time?
That's correct, yes.
So there'd be many more trucks per day?
Many more trucks per day.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
All right, and then on the lighting, I, I had some thoughts about how it needed to be turned off even earlier. You had 11:00 PM. I, I think maybe 10:00 PM might be reasonable. Because one of the things, the lighting was treated in the specific plan and in the ER, EIRs as a purely aesthetic concern, but it's as much an environmental concern in terms of habitat, and, you know, if there are nocturnal critters, or, you know, whatever the, the ambient environment there is. It's not just a human aesthetic concern. It's an environmental concern. And then, I guess finally, I have a question on the signage. Did the district objected to, but finally ultimately accepted, the five-foot height? Or where do we stand on the height of that, that monument sign concept?
I believe it is a five-foot height. Let me double-check the resolution adopted by the council.
I just read a couple of different things in different places, and after a while, it becomes a bit of a blur. Maybe you could be looking that up while we, I pass the baton to somebody else.
I'm going to wait to get these answers before we move forward.
What are we, about the sign and what else?
If the questions are going to go to her, and she's looking something up, I don't see that as being productive to move forward.
No, I know, and, and I'm, I'm sure I had, I raised other questions, too. I just don't remember now what.
Well, I mean, you commented about the grading. You didn't really raise any questions about it, other than commenting about it. But yes, it seems like a lot of grading, but that's what's needed. That's what's needed. You know, if you guys want to have a, more kids in your school, you better build a good school. Seems pretty simple to me. They seem to do a pretty good job over the hill. They built a good private school. They went from having, I think I just looked it up. It was when Oaks Christian started, which is, a lot of kids have been lost out of our community to go there. They started with 200 students between the middle school and high school in 2020, and now they have over 1,400 students, you know, 20 years later. So, and probably, it's probably even more than that now. But, you know, there's more than, the answer is in regards to enrollment and how that stuff has declined. I think that we had the environmental issues that went on with the school. We had COVID, which is something that I think is maybe sometimes underrepresented. A lot of people favored private schools that stayed open when public schools were closed, and their parents at work and other things, and they have an option or whatever else. We had a fire that took a lot of homes away. A lot of those homes haven't been rebuilt. Families lived in those homes.
Well, let, let me ask you, if, as, as the Malibu Times reported, I, I have it here in the document somewhere, but that, there, the median price in Malibu in, I think, 2021 was over $8 million, and the cheapest was...
I was going to acknowledge that it's not conducive to young families with young children.
Yeah.
And it doesn't seem necessarily that something's going to change, but you can still make some more children. I don't know about these guys. I plan on making hopefully some more children, and hopefully we'll get the enrollment up. Not that many children, but...
But, but, okay, if, these pressures seem to be one directional. They're going in one direction. Is there some facility that could say, oh, well, we're going to get students from somewhere else? We're going to allow them to, to...
Look, I think that unfortunately, in our community, the, the, some of the conversation between the residents here in regards to the district and those things have caused people to become alienated or whatever else, and they've chosen to take a different path in their education. Hope in this project is that people, this will spur enrollment. And moreover, with a future separation of the district, and when Malibu has its own school district, it's my belief that we would see a lot more students return to school here.
Do we, Skylar, do we know how many students, of the students we have actually live in the district? And how many students in, in our census? If everybody went to the school, there would be? Because it's...
You know, I don't know, I don't know exactly all the numbers out, but I do know, as it's been testified here tonight, as it's made our community a great community before, is if we have a great school, we're going to have a great community, and that's what my goal is.
Maybe we could ask Steve Masetti, or whoever might best answer this.
Hold on, because we had a question down here from Jeff.
Yeah, I, I just want to weigh in on that for a little bit of context. Actually, when the idea of creating a Malibu High School was first suggested, it was in response to a plan by... it was in response to a plan by the district to consolidate Juan Cabrillo and the middle school that were on site. They were going to shrink them down. And the idea was, it was, it was a sort of this spiral of doom, because you, you, you shrink the facility and then more people leave, and then you can offer fewer alternatives, and more people leave, and so on. And that was, that was the attitude that was commonly expressed back in this, whatever, 33, 34, four years ago, whatever it was. And the idea of creating Malibu High School was, came about as a reaction to that idea. The reaction was, you build the facility, if you build it, they will come. But the idea was, it was to create something that would attract people, attract them back from private schools, attract them back from other decisions that they had made. And at the time, it was largely successful. It did that. And so I think it's short-sighted to think, well, you know, gee, we've got this kind of projection going on, because the projections in those days were all the same. Projections go in waves in the community. And there have been periods of time when we've had students coming in, we've had periods where numbers are dropping. But we're building a school not for the next five years or the next 10 years. I mean, this is a long-term investment in the future of the community. And so I think it's short-sighted to think in terms of, well, gee, maybe we could get by if we just had fewer buildings and, you know, had people in fewer facilities. That's the same thinking that was prevalent back when the idea was we're going to shrink Malibu Park Junior High School and Juan Cabrillo together. So I just want to add that as counter-
Steve Masetti or somebody else has the comment on the projections, that they provided this from the predictive enrollment analytics showing a drop in over eight years of 35% from what the plan says to what they expect in 2031. I mean, what is that based on? How, you know, is that reversible? Is that-
Could I make comment?
You can, after we call up Steve so he can answer. Or Carrie, you want to answer a couple of those questions real quick? I like to move this a little bit forward too.
Okay. I'll attempt to answer some of that.
Thank you.
We have seen a decline, and the numbers that we're working with are from Decision Insight, which is a company that does these types of analytics for school districts up and down the state. They are very much based and looking at what is happening as far as both your demographic, growth, but also what the city is doing and how it is developing spaces for families and people to live. But that's also tracking where we've go, you know, where we, where we see it going. So yes, right now, we do anticipate that if everything remains sort of on the same course, that we will, we will see a decline. What's not completely seen in this is that we're also though building a, so the challenge is, when the high school gets smaller, the high school can't operate like a full comprehensive high school like it has. It's going to have to change, and it's going to be changing in character. And so the building that we've built, we have planned, is actually one that does adapt to the fact that we have less students. Now, that also though means you still need a lot of the different types of classrooms, different types of spaces. You do need the lab spaces, you do need the different types of areas. So it's not like you can just sort of go whack, you know, cut off a bunch of things. And part of the idea around the classroom sizes, which are all expanded and bigger because we found in our ed specs, the way we're teaching now, is we actually need larger spaces and differing, sort of varying areas for that learning. So with that, we're planning for, you know, a little bit bigger number, but this school size will support that. Also, the other part of the thing is, is if you look at the entire campus plan, you know, we have planned for a good number of students to remain or to come back or to be here, but we also know that sometimes we will have to adapt or change. So I do, we do see plans in Phases 3 and 4 where we might lose or cut back or challenge that will have the high school building, but as things sort of minimize, we would adjust the entire campus plan to fit that. But right now, we're aiming for the larger number.
And would that create, and how much have you looked at the potential snafus in doing that? So if you said basically, all right, this, do the high school now, even if it amounts to functionally maybe four students per room when you add it all up and you count the various rooms, and say, when we get to the later phase, we will dial that back from what we thought we needed, because the projections have turned out to be true, that things are going down. What are the potential snafus at that point where you say like, okay, well, we're going to now be splitting this high school building into high school students and middle school students again, because we have, you know, several empty classrooms or, you know, whatever, like, what, how much flex is there in adapting in the future?
Okay, so one of the things we've taken with this construction of this building, and it's one of the things that I'm very proud that the district has focused on, is really looking at an open building type of construction that actually looks at the building and sort of builds it to adapt to the future, knowing that education is changing, that this building has been planned, that if we need to go in and the way that it's structured and reposition, reconfigure, we could take one whole wing of this and it could become part of the Performing Arts Center that we're planning in Phase 4. And we could do part of that sections in there. We could adapt this building, and we expect over the 50, 60, 70 years of the life of this building, it will adapt, because as we've seen, education has changed and is continuing to change.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie.
Question. There's the physical size of the building, and then there's the fact that there's the cost. And it looks from Craig's figures that within a very short period of time, it's about a million bucks a student or more. And right now, you have 135 staff, I believe, from the staff report. At what point, there's two, two ways to go here. We don't go out of the Santa Monica District or we have our own district. At what point is it too expensive to run a high school with 300, $200 million facility and staff it when you only have 200, 250 students? And that, and that is, you know, Jeff talked about waves, but we know in Malibu, we've lost 35% of our population. We have lost actually not here anymore. So that, that thing about population dropping, or your school body dropping 30%, because those people are gone. They don't live here anymore, and they never will come back. Because there are short-term rentals, there are third, fourth, or fifth houses, there are et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That census told us that. So yes, we can take a building that's built and say, okay, we configure it, but can you afford to run a building and staff it with a comprehensive school program with a couple hundred students? Or will it happen like happened years ago? We start busing to Santa Monica again and locking the doors? And how does that work into your plans? Because Malibu is-
John, I'm going to have to have a lot of kids to make sure that doesn't happen.
Well, we only have 6,500 people and it's 50, and our average age is 58, so you better get busy, okay?
Isn't the issue whether this CDP application is consistent with the general, with the specific plan that the, that the council adopted? And, and I don't remember that, I don't see how the population projections really play into that.
And dropping 30% of your students doesn't play into how big a school you build?
No, and my question is, shouldn't we be, shouldn't we be looking at whether this application is consistent with the specific plan that the council adopted?
No, because the council cannot, they did not look at where we are 20 years from now. They looked at what they want now.
Well, I've got another suggestion. Why don't we take a straw poll to see whether this idea has any legs? And if it does, then we can continue to discuss it. But we've heard sufficient argument, I think, on the issue of-
Well, I never got an answer to my question, and that's not sufficient argument, to just say, the building's this big, we can crank it around. I want to know if you were a small town of 6,500 people that might become 5,000, can you run a building that big and staff it to educate 200, 300 people? Not really. These are school taxes, not city taxes.
As long as-
And as a city councilman, you should know that.
Let's hear from Mr.-
Okay. In the current funding formula that is set up, set by the state, which does make our school district a basic aid district, which means that our property taxes, Santa Monica, Malibu together, exceed the amount of money that the state offers as their, as their state aid level. So as long as that funding formula remains the same, and the assessed value in Malibu and Santa Monica together continue to rise and grow, there will be sufficient funds to educate even the smallest number of students.
Question. Really?
Yes.
Okay, that's it. We're done with that conversation.
I mean, for that part of the question, I want to say yes.
No, he answered the question. We're not going to talk about that anymore, and I don't see the reason to do it. He just said the kids are going to get educated as long as the tax basis remains.
Question.
Greg, question, go.
Could, could, could a school, could a school of this cutting, cutting-edge, state-of-the-art, could all this be done in a building no taller than 28 feet high? Why does it need to be 36 feet high?
All of this could be done in a hut out on the beach, but that's not the way it's going to be done. It's going to be done like this with what's put forth, because-
We are going to vote, and other people are going to vote, and you're going to have more bond issues, and it's not decided by us. We're just looking at why.
To Commissioner Jennings' observation, it isn't just the specific plan, because we have an SPR in here that gives discretion over neighborhood characters and so forth, and the general plan colors this too.
Okay, I have some questions for staff if we're done, if you don't want to discuss this anymore.
Okay. We got a set of plans. They're done. You're not going to go back and change anything. You can't do that.
Why not?
Because you can't.
Tell us, tell us why.
Hang on, I'm speaking.
No, no, I'm speaking.
This is an approved, this is an approved set of plans, and you don't go backwards. You build what you've got, and you go forward. If, if things change in the years that come, it sounds to me, the people I'm looking at in the front row and behind them will deal with it at that time. But right now, we need to build a school, and we're up against it. And what scares me the most about this is, you're not even looking at what the kids are doing. Our school is ranked, our school is ranked in the top 104% in the state. You're not even paying attention to what these kids are doing. That is another huge accomplishment by us. Nationwide, it's way up there. We have a hell of a school. We need to build a really nice school so we can continue this for our students. The other thing is, I'm scared to death with this date and the Coastal Commission getting this thing twice. I don't know how you're going to do this. We've got to get there before October 31st. I don't know how we drive that thing to Ventura. I don't care where you drive it in Eureka, Yerica, or San Luis Obispo, but somebody needs to get the paperwork to these people at Coastal before that date. Because we can't grade after October 31st, whether this is a flat lot or not. And we'll be up here fighting about that, and people are going to go, they'll appeal it, or they'll say something, but we have to do something. We have to have machines on the ground, and they got to be working at the end of October, period. We can't wait for November formality signing. This is way too damn important. We are just, we've lost the year, as Mr. Randall has told us. Now we're trying to make up for it, but we better hurry. We've got to hurry. This has got to get through tonight. Coastal Commission, when I was doing my report, I had, I had the Coastal Commission report on the big screen that we used during our Zoom meetings, and on my laptop, I'm looking at ours. So concurrently, I'm looking at what theirs is and what ours are. And they're pretty damn close. We've got things we have to change. The school district has already said we're going to make those changes. There's nothing to talk about here. They like what we've got, they're going to make the changes, and we got to go, period. So you get up there on the 8th, they're going to sign it, comes back to council, I believe council's going to approve it, and then we got to go back to the Coastal Commission. Who's taking that paperwork as soon as they approve it? That's got to happen. We can't wait till November. Thank you.
Ready?
I'm ready to make a motion to reapprove this.
I'm ready to ask some questions of staff, and I'm ready to object to, I'm ready to-
I second it.
Okay, and Roberts Rules of Orders. Okay, shut off debate, follow them.
Right, so Vice Schmazit, just because there's a motion on the floor does not end debate?
He just ended it. He won't recognize me to ask questions.
I believe you recognize you're speaking right now.
I'm speaking because he didn't. Okay, can I ask some questions? What, me and I?
Yeah, just please make them specific and stop questions that will waste the taxpayers' money and time.
I just listened to Mr. Smith's thing about, don't bother checking anything out, just build it. So let's build a, I suggest we build a Nordstrom in San Francisco. Now, Renika, a couple of questions. There's been comments on the fact that, by people sending in letters, that we are authorizing a 40, as I remember, a 45-foot-high gymnasium, and that the volleyball NCAA or whatever they call themselves, says 25 is standard gymnasium. Is there a reason why we gave a variance to go to 45 feet?
I believe that question came up when the, either the planning commission and/or city council was considering the specific plan. Ultimately, the council did approve a new threshold of 45 feet for the high school gym. Again, that's a threshold, like a maximum height, subject to a site plan review. It's not a by right height. The school district can give feedback on why that interior height was requested.
Okay, now-
But that's not in front of us tonight.
And that is not in front of the-
We're not approving a CDP that says 45 feet.
No, the only building proposed in this scope is the new high school building.
Okay. Now, you say the, the compromise with the Coastal Commission is, they have to follow the dark skies ordinance.
That's correct.
And so that, does that in any way change the restrictions on the football field lights?
No, that's not a part of the scope.
I had a question that wasn't answered.
I have one question for you. Does the marquee sign required to be off at 11:00 PM?
I believe there's a condition that requires all lighting to be off by 11:00 PM.
That is not a light, that is a sign. I just want to make sure that we're clear, or I'll put it in there as a condition, that the lit-up sign be off at night.
There's a condition that applies to all lighting, which I interpret that to include that for the marquee.
And is that conditioning?
But we can add a condition specific.
I'm going to add a condition to my motion that specifically is in regards to that. And we've received a lot of comments from some neighbors about that and the character in the area not wanting that sign light to stay on all night long. That's just a beautiful thing.
That goes, let me finish my question with Renika. That's all under dark skies, correct?
That's correct.
And dark sky says after you, she turn off a half an hour after you use it.
That's correct.
So the whole school is that way. They're not using the gym, they got to turn the light off.
That's correct, with the exception of security lighting.
Security lighting, and that's motion sensor D2.
That's correct.
Okay. And so this idea of perimeter lighting, all around the two and a half miles or whatever it is, that's also dark skies. It's only when, when motion censored.
That's correct.
Okay. So we don't need to worry about lighting, we don't need to worry about people taking football lights up and down and all this kind of stuff. It's all set.
Yes, any changes to the operation of the sports field lighting is not part of this project's scope.
And, and the swimming pool is back to real lighting? Okay.
That's not on this either.
What?
That's not part of this either.
It's all, yeah, it's, it's gone. Now, on the, we had a series, we voted unanimously for a series of things we recommended to the city. for a series of things we recommended to the city, and it seems like most of them are gone, that the City Council just ignored them. But I'm wondering, did the provision where we said, "We, the city, monitor the construction" versus the school district monitoring the construction, was that taken? Is that in here or not?
That is, that's part of the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. I think it's Exhibit One to your resolution.
Okay, but that's mitigation. What about building construction?
Let's see. Well, the city doesn't issue the permits, but any compliance with the...
But somebody finalizes it and says, "This thing's built right," right?
Yeah, the state of California has authority over that.
Okay. And you said, "Did you do a traffic study to present to the city?" Did that happen?
That was part of the EIR.
Okay. Now, my biggest concern, and the only reason why I'd be against this project is, did, is, are they restricted on one entrance from Morning View, entrance from Morning View Drive only?
No, they are not. And I believe that came up as well during the specific plan hearings. I believe they needed access from both ends of the school site.
So we're going to have six thousand square, six thousand linear feet plus, maybe seven thousand of open fence line and entrances? And the city is supposed to guard that from violence. I'll put it, I don't know what you want to call it, mass shooting or whatever. That's the way it stands today. Is that correct?
Maybe the school district can speak to that. I recall that issue coming up because I believe there was...
Yeah, because I'd like to hear them say, "Because I'm going to have a very hard time voting..." I'm not going to vote no, but I'm going to have a very hard time yes, voting yes, if a bunch of kids are going to get killed because I did something stupid. Okay? Now, can you explain why you're going to have seven thousand or so linear feet of open places where people can come in?
Okay.
It's a mile and a quarter.
As you see with the campus, as you approach it now with the middle school section and what we call Building A and B, we are differentiating between where parking is and where students are. We are setting the perimeter not around the parking or around the entire property, but around the areas where the students are. So the building, the A/B building, provides a lot of the barrier there, and that exists already. So you can actually have the drop-off pickup and you have the parking lot that's the staff lot there, and then that provides a controlled entry into the main lobby. And then also, as they come up the ramps to the upper level where the middle school is, there's also a very well-controlled entry. As we've designed continuing across Morning View, going into this new high school area, there is a bus drop-off area, and that allows to get those buses off of Morning View, and that makes it both safer for students who are having on the buses and the cars. And there is a perimeter fence then between what is the building. Right now, it's the theater building, you know, the theater cafeteria building, and what will be the new building. There will be perimeter fencing there. That'll be our perimeter there. The new building actually forms a perimeter, a safety perimeter. So there's a parking lot in there, a small safe parking lot for visitors. And then there's a controlled access for visitors to enter that building. And then there is a driveway around, and that has a controlled access so that you only have gates that can get there to go into that back parking lot. Then there's a controlled access from the back parking lot to get into the rest of the campus. So we've created an interior perimeter for students for safety, and the parking lots and, you know, the roadways are around that.
But what you just described, all enters from Morning View?
Yes.
Okay, then why...
Because what you requested was that there would be actually no entrance from any other place, and that was something that you asked for.
Right.
So, but yes, we do have, we do have the entrances from Morning View, but they are divided into the drive entrances. We have three essential drive entrances. One is predominantly for the middle school, one is for the buses and the bus drop-off area, and the other is for students going up to the...
No, I understand that. And what you've described is exactly what we proposed. No entrances other than Morning View. But what is eliminated here is now their entrances are allowed anywhere along that seven thousand square feet, seven thousand linear feet, anywhere. Okay? And that, as you know by looking at the diagram of the total campus, there's many places where you can come in and you've, when a prior project or prior hearing, we're talking about entrances on our streets, I guess it'd be east of there, Fillory Heights and a couple others, which to me is unguardable, unguardable. And that's why I don't know why you object to having entrances only on Morning View because basically, that's the only place that could be guarded unless you can tell me, "How are you going to guard all the other forty-three acres or whatever it is?"
John, do you think the only entrances are in Morning View?
They removed the restriction that said they can only have entrances on Morning View. That is taken out of the resolution.
Okay.
And I would like it back because I, you see what happens almost every day in the news.
The, okay, so in the school site, we are, okay, so I want to define the word entrances a little specifically. All of the vehicular entrances for normal use are all off of Morning View. We did ask for and want to retain both an emergency and utility access from Clover Heights in the back. And that's both something that our emergency vehicles had made a request for, and also sometimes we need to get trucks and things in there to maintain fields and other aspects. But all of the driving entrances are coming in off of Morning View. All of the pedestrian entrances, most of them are off of Morning View. We do allow for a pedestrian entrance off of Flores Heights, and there is the pedestrian entrance that's coming from the upper parking lot that's by the football field. We tend not to open the one in the back on Clover Heights because we both don't have that many students there, plus it's hard to maintain. But the one on Flores Heights, we do open up because we have a number of students who do walk to school from there, but then that gets secured once the school day begins. But most of the entrances are coming from Morning View, and then we have, and once school begins, we do have a controlled perimeter over that part of the campus.
Yeah, and my question is, no, first question is, when is the last time you had a shooter drive onto a campus in the United States? They walk, okay? And number two, are you going to guard these other entrances full-time? Because they are open. That's one of the problems with the neighbors in Fillory Heights, is open access to the school with no supervision, okay? And what's to stop the Proud Boys from walking down the street and walking right in? Now, I'm not, you may think I'm being funny, but I can't see how you're going to guard. You can have locked gates where you can let trucks in, et cetera, but to have open entrances on a seven-thousand-foot perimeter, as far as I'm concerned, is crazy, okay? And it's unguardable. My suggestion is that all their entrances are off of Morning View. You can guard Morning View, you can monitor it, you can do all kinds of stuff.
So you want to go to a parent who buys a house next to a school and tell them your kid can't walk to school even when we know that the gate's going to be closed after your kid gets onto the campus and the school day begins?
Yes. Okay, well, let's see if it's got legs. I'm just, I'm just...
It has no legs.
Okay, well, it has no legs. I just want an answer. Are you personally going to be responsible for this?
They're designing a safe campus for the students to go to, and that's what they're...
How many guards are you going to have? Are you going to have guards other than on Morning View?
And so Chair, if I may, and you can answer Vice Chair's question after that if the chair so allows it. We really are getting far away...
Into the weeds.
No, we aren't. It's in our staff report. It's right here.
Let me just finish, let me just finish. This was a topic that was thoroughly discussed during the specific plan. I understand that there was direction, City Council made the decision, and once again, you are...
And now you're back to us. What are we doing here?
Correct, but, and so that's my point. This is not a second bite at the apple at the specific plan.
No, but it's not a rubber stamp either.
I never said, trust me, this is the farthest thing from a rubber stamp. What I'm saying is that what is before you is the CDP, the CUP, as listed on the agenda, and going adrift of those without relating it back to what is before you is we're just getting off.
If the CUP's in front of us, access is in front of us. By definition.
Once again, my statement stands, Vice Chair, you're...
Okay, so all I want to know, and then obviously, I'm going to be voted down on this, obviously. But I want to have some school official tell me, "You are responsible, not the city of Malibu. You personally are responsible for the safety of those kids, and you will guard all entrances." That's all I want to hear.
Can I ask a question? Is it a closed campus?
There is a secure perimeter around the areas where the students are. Thank you.
Is every campus a secure campus?
Quit attacking these people, John.
I'm not attacking them, don't attack me.
Gentlemen, gentlemen.
Can I add a point of clarification? That was part of the Planning Commission's recommendation to the City Council. When staff presented that recommendation to the council, we laid all of that out, including the school district's response as to why they didn't want to limit all access from Morning View, and the City Council ultimately decided to not require the campus to be limited from, the access to be limited to, excuse me, from Morning View Drive.
I understand that, and now, in public forever, this will be on tape. The City Council and the school district is responsible for the safety of those students.
Okay, I made a motion and I had a second.
I'm sorry, I asked a question I never got an answer for.
Sorry, go ahead.
Quick one. What is the height of the tallest existing building on the campus?
Yes, I actually did forward Parker a cross-section that was presented to the Planning Commission. Maybe he can help pull it up.
Just a number is all I'm looking for.
Existing, I believe the tallest building from those cross-sections, let me, I would prefer just to look at the graphic, I don't want to misquote. While we're pulling that up, the site does ascend from Morning View Drive north. So buildings that are beyond where the high school buildings are, are at a higher elevation. Oh, is it? Oh, I can tilt it.
I think everybody's fairly familiar with the contour of the land up there and the fact that I think it's pretty minimal, the impacts on residences based on how the elevation works.
Well, to my mind, it would be a different thing if it says it's comparable to the existing development. If the whole thing is currently twenty-eight feet, I'd be like, oh. If it's already, oh no, the tallest one is thirty-six already, then the horse is out of the barn.
Considering that the building was there when the general plan was adopted and the general plan description of Malibu Park was included in that, that building was included in that description.
True, and so that's why I'd like to know, is that already sixty? My recollection is it's not that tall. But I was a small person then.
I think it's the gym, and I think the gym is.
Oh, the gym, right. I guess I was thinking more of the classroom height.
Yeah, we can't figure out...
From our memory, we believe that the current new gym is thirty-six feet.
What about the two-story classroom buildings?
The two-story classroom building, the one we just built, is the twenty-eight? Is twenty-eight, and when you walk around in the library, you know that it is. It does, it feels pretty cave-like.
Well, are you saying it doesn't work at twenty-eight?
It does not. It does not, it's not a good educational space.
So it could be thirty-two instead of thirty-six? I mean, I just don't, it seems like a big difference in terms of the...
Craig, with all due respect, I lost this argument a long time ago in terms of building height and the correlation between that and the actual education of a student. So I'm just going to go with it. If the school professionals are making that suggestion, that's going to be my vote.
Okay, I'm just, we did have people concerned about it, so...
I couldn't find anybody that told me a correlation between building height size and the quality of education that somebody got because there was people getting a good quality education in eight-foot tall stadium, people getting a good quality education in a fourteen-foot tall stadium.
Okay, but then by that argument, the low heights of the current library are perfectly fine.
I'm going to go for airflow and a lot of other beautiful things that are needed. And I would like to have a vote on this item. I made a motion to approve this. I don't need to add the amendment to it in regards to the lighting because that sounds like that's been captured elsewhere. And I had a second. My motion about the sign, I was told, is captured elsewhere in regards to it being turned off at eleven P.M.
I would add a friendly amendment that we cut this from eleven to ten P.M. All the, because there's safety lighting that comes on motion detector at any time.
I am aware that sometimes there's people and teachers that work till a little bit later, and I would love to make this suggestion to our facilities manager who's sitting in front of us, that you turn off the lights at the earliest possible.
Okay.
But you do have the ability to keep them on for eleven, and I would imagine that the electrical code is not going to allow the lights in classrooms to just stay on with nobody inside of them. And that's going to go for probably the entirety of the campus. So I don't think that we need to do that, and I'm not willing to accept it.
And the safety factor of what the state recommends or tells us, that tells them what they would have to have, a certain amount of lumens that you have to have.
Skylar, I believe she answered that question. They are under the Dark Sky ordinance, and the Dark Sky ordinance says, "At succession of use, you have a half an hour to turn the lights on." It's not eleven o'clock, it doesn't say ten, it doesn't say four.
Correct.
It says half an hour after use.
I will add that there is a comment in there in the language in regards to the lumens. The lumen output that's selected for the Dark Sky ordinance is very low. I do believe that there may be some requirements in areas on this space where the lumen outlet is required by law or code to be higher than that. I'm just putting that out there. I'm aware of it from my line of work, but I will say that I'm okay with them complying with the Dark Sky ordinance. Okay. Do I have a second? I believe it. Okay.
I believe Chair, I believe Commissioner Smith seconded it earlier this evening, and so the motion is staff's recommendation as amended, as presented to the record. Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Chair Peak. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
I will abstain for safety reasons.
Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. What, no applause?